This conference will now be recorded.
... The United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good morning to all. The next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will take place Friday, June 3, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida, 33872. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. We'll start with the consent agenda. First on that is minutes of the Board of Supervisors, a regular meeting held May 6, 2022.
Motion approved.
Second. Any comments from the board on the minutes? Any comments from the public on the minutes? Okay, Deb.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes. Next would be the golf financials for March 2022. I have a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any comments? This is yours, Michael. Any comments from the board? Any questions? I have a couple of questions, if I may. Just for my own edification, I probably should have called you on this. On page, I guess, page 23, the average rate, the APR and the non-member APR. Just explain those to me, what exactly they are. I think I know, but I want to just verify it. In other words, it says like the average, the average rate this year is $2,088 higher than it was last year.
Where are you at?
Huh?
Where are you at?
Page 23.
But you just said that's a suitable.
An average rate. If you go over to the right versus prior year, it's $2,088 higher.
Oh, there we go. Okay, got it.
And I was just, what, does that mean, well, what exactly does that mean?
Well, I believe those APR numbers, that includes not only just golf revenue, but it includes all, all the revenue in golf as well, which is just your average dollar per round, basically. So for every person that goes down the course, that's, that's the average dollar that's coming into the club.
So the average rate is what people pay to play golf?
Yes, plus other revenue, yeah.
The APR is what?
Well, that's your, that's your average dollar per round. And then the non-member APR, and I may have to see all what flows into that to separate those two out. Off the top of my head, I don't know exactly what flows into that number for that rate.
What's the difference between average rate and APR? I'm sorry.
Well, that's what the APR is. It's you.
But you got it listed here twice.
Right. You have APR and then you have non-member APR.
Huh? They're not the same number. You have the same number for non-member APR and average rate, but the average rate and the APR is a different number.
Probably a combination.
I don't know. That's what I meant. I just wanted clarification.
Right. So the average rate would be the green, the APR includes more than just greens fees. So if they buy a bucket of balls, that would go into the APR. That's dollar per round for all golf revenue. Average rate would be the green fee only. Does that make sense? So if I paid average the $44 per round, but I buy a $3 bucket of balls on average, then that brings up the APR.
But the non-member APR is less than, is it APR?
Like I said, I'm not exactly sure how, what flows into that non-member APR. I have not dove into that, but I'd be happy to do so.
Well, let's do this. I'm sorry.
It would be the same thing, Mike. The non-member is non-member revenue. That means they have to house, I guess. The same thing would apply.
Right. But as far as, as far as exactly what numbers flow into the non-member one, I don't know. But as far as the other one goes.
Why don't we just do this at the next meeting? Can you just bring back and tell us what these are?
I'll, I'll let you know exactly what flows into those, yes.
So it's page 23, that middle section, average rate, APR and non-member APR. Just give me a little bit of a clarification or give us a little bit of a.
Michael, when you enter your, when you register golf on your computer, does it not go in there automatically? Do not have the vision set on your computer?
Yes. But as far, when it goes from the POS to all our systems and all that, how it flows in there, I just, I'm going to dig into that a little deeper and explain exactly what's going where, okay?
Does the APR rate include the non-member APR rate?
That's, and that's to the same point. I'm not sure what flows into the non-member one. Yep.
See, what I'm looking to find out is how much improvement have made, more so with the outside play and collecting monies closer to what we supposedly should be charging them or the top ceiling of what we should be charging.
Right.
So if I'm reading it right, it may be that we've improved $2,088 per round.
And that, and that is correct.
Last year, which is a good thing.
Exactly.
But I just want a clarification.
That is correct. Correct.
Okay. I assume that the expenses for maintenance are getting, getting out of control in March because of what happened with the golf course. Is that true?
Yeah. When you see the April financials come out, you're going to see certain light items that, that for sure are over budget, especially top dressing sand. As, I'm actually working through those right now. It's not, it's not crazy out of line with the expenses. Some light items are over, some are under. You're going to see some of that probably flow a little bit into May as well, but it's not, on the bottom line, it's not way out of line.
And when you say all these listings on page 24, it says in-line, in-line.
That's a, that's, that's basically the month, month-to-date-to-budget. It's, it's, that means it's on, it was on target for the month, yes. That is, that is what I'm stating.
Because if you look at labor on page 27, we're, we're spending a lot more labor than
Right.
When we were budgeted to. We were, we're actually running about $100,000 more in labor than we were budgeted for.
Okay. I'm more, when I'm, I'm more looking at the, the month financials for that goes. And you got to also remember, you got to look at it as a percentage as well. So labor is a percentage of sales. So on the golf side, if you're looking at golf labor, you know, if we do $50,000 of extra revenue, it's going to require more labor to do that. So if we're over budget in revenue, you should see, we should be a little bit over budget in labor. Doesn't always work that way. Sometimes we're able to be efficient and kind of stick, stick to the budget, but just depending on what we're doing, you tend to be a little.
If we do $50,000 more in golf revenue, how, why would we need more labor? I assume we do the labor, we have two rounds or 10 rounds.
Sure. And like I said, it all depends on what exactly we're doing. So if we, say we bring in another tournament, if we have an extra tournament that, that we did not really budget for, that's going to bring in extra revenue, but it's going to require more labor to execute that tournament than it may if we would have just ran regular tee times. It, it's not always happens that way. We're looking to keep the percentage the same. Same thing you would do in F and B sales, you're trying to keep the percentage the same. It's, you can't really tie it down to every little perfect day-to-day because every day is a little bit different. Running straight tee times requires less labor than a tournament shotgun, so.
Less labor, what, on the golf course?
I'm sorry?
Less labor on the golf course?
It requires less labor for the golf operations. If you're looking at golf maintenance, that is running slightly high for the year. But as far as operational labor, golf shop help, starters, rangers, cart guys and those things, that's where you're going to want to keep your percentages the same. Does that make sense?
You're dancing. Okay. I'll buy it for now, but I, I guess my concerns is additional rounds and additional plays should not justify additional expenses on the course. Now, damage on the course.
Right.
Problems with the greens, that's another subject. But I'm just saying, in general, more rounds does not dictate more expenses.
For, for golf course maintenance.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. We'll leave it at that for now. I do have one other question on, on a check that we wrote. Why would we give Inn on the Lakes $2,000?
So the Citrus Golf Trail is housed, the treasurer for the Citrus Golf Trail is the Inn on the Lakes, which is, the Inn on the Lakes is the hotel partner for the Citrus Golf Trail. So that is our dues to the Citrus Golf Trail.
Why didn't we write it out to the Citrus Golf Trail?
It, like I said, it's housed through the Inn on the Lakes. They're, they are the treasurer for the Citrus Golf Trail. I'm, I'm assuming, that, that number rings a bell in my head, that's.
I don't know either. I'm just, it just looks strange that we write a hotel a check for $2,000.
Right. That, I'm not 100% correct on that, but that number lines up exactly with that, so it should be that. And I will verify that if you'd like. But there is no, there's no other reason we would write a check to them.
Yeah, I'd like me to verify it and then tell me why we don't write it to the Citrus Golf Trail, which I assume, I mean, what does the Inn on the Lakes do? They sign it over to them? Or are they part of the Citrus Golf Trail?
They are, they are.
Whatever.
Here we go again. The Inn on the Lakes is part of the Citrus Golf Trail. They are the hotel accommodations partner for the trail itself. When we, when the trail was organized, Phil Hatfield at the Inn on the Lakes took on the treasurer's role. So he is, that is where that accounting goes for.
I would think, just check it out. I don't think that's.
I will verify that for you, but I'm pretty sure.
I think we should have written a check to them.
Yes.
Not to a hotel. I'm sure it's all above board, but just to be on the safe side.
Absolutely.
If, if that's the way it is being set up, I think Citrus Golf needs to look at the possibility of having their own bank account, if you will. To be ready to check the Inn on the Lakes, I, it just doesn't sit quite right with me.
It's just, it's destined for.
Let's, let's check it out and let us.
I'll, yeah, I'll verify all that.
I'm not saying he's doing anything wrong, but I think it should be better and cleaner if it was going to Citrus Golf.
That's all I had. Does anybody from the board have anything else they'd like to ask him about the report? Anybody from the public? Okay. Thank you, Michael. Can we have a vote?
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes. All right. Moving on, public comments. This is for anybody who would like to say anything that we are not still to discuss at this meeting today. Are there any public comments? Okay. Moving on, Scott Kirk.
Good morning. A couple of things to report on. This past Tuesday, I was successful in getting the motion passed for the first nine items that you had submitted for the American Rescue Plan funding for your district, the wastewater projects, like I'd reported during your last meeting. You'd submitted 10 items totaling a little bit over $1.5 million, that last item being that $950,000 item, which we didn't have the budget for, that I explained last time. My goal was to get the other nine items approved, to which I believe was $561,100, and that did pass the commission this past Tuesday. So staff will be getting with your, with your manager, with your staff, and let them know how those funds will be dispersed when those, when those projects take place in your community. So that's good news. Was able to get that through. I have a meeting Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday afternoon at 2:00 p.m. with our county administrator, our director from Road and Bridge, and our county engineer to discuss Schumacher Road project. So I should have some more information on that at your next meeting. That's all I have for you today, unless you have any questions.
Thank you both for your effort on that.
Yep. Yeah, Chris attended the meeting and spoke, had a few questions for him, but he got up and represented you folks well, and we were able to get it passed. Any other questions?
Good job.
I appreciate Scott carried the flag up the hill.
Yeah.
And it was 3-2, so it was close. It was kind of teetering there for a while, but we, I told each of the commissioners afterwards, we appreciated their support and we did reiterate, you know, Sun and Lakes are a big community where we're 10,000 people right now and growing rapidly. And I think it all went over well, and we thank you, Scott. Thank the board members.
I appreciate your comments, and like I said, it did, it passed 3 to 2, so it passed. So your board, you got five on your board, so week by, we got it 3 to 2, and so we got it done for you and certainly appreciate you folks out here. And certainly, you know, those projects also being tied to servicing the hospital and the school and things like that, that certainly carried some weight in the proposal. So that helped out and certainly, you know, that the funds came back available from the Spring Lake broadband project, which Xfinity ended up taking that expense. So that was able to put some money back into the American Rescue Plan fund, which now your nine items will be on our earmark, earmarked project list moving forward. And like I said, our staff will work with your staff to facilitate that when those projects happen. So I believe if I'm not mistaken, you will have until, and staff can verify this with Chris, either to 2024, 2025, that those projects will have to, at a minimum, be implemented and started. Okay? So he will share that, he will share that with your staff to make sure what the guidelines are for the use of those funds. And like I says, I will report back on the next meeting to update you on the Schumacher Road.
Okay. I too would like to thank both you guys for your efforts.
Appreciate it. I mean, certainly.
I think this is probably the first time.
Yeah, exactly. Come up with some good news that you guys actually going to like me when I leave here. So, you know, we're, we're trying, certainly, like I said, you know, you know, the county was awarding some funds through that American Rescue Plan, and I explained to them that you folks had some management changes during that time when that first came out and had an interim manager and what have you, and, you know, that I didn't want to, you know, you know, hold that, you know, being something that would not make you eligible in the future. And so we were fortunate that the funds came back available. You had a manager in place and was able to submit those projects. And every one of the projects, the 10 project that you submitted scored the highest as far as eligibility, so that certainly helped. So, you know, I think it's a win-win situation for everybody and certainly glad to be able to help out.
Okay. Thank you again. Any public comments or questions for this gentleman?
Thank you so much.
Don't go too far. State your name, please.
Pat Holmes, resident. The only question I have, I haven't, I'm sorry, I haven't attended the meetings lately. Is there any update on the recycle bins?
Yeah, the engineering department did give a little update at our past Tuesday's meeting, and don't quote me totally on memory, but the Lake Placid facility is going to be up and running, I believe, by the 1st of June. Avon Park will be the next facility, and they're looking 1st of, no later than the 1st of July on that. And then the Sebring facility, which is by the YMCA and Max Lom Ball Field, 1st of August. So all the inter-local agreements have been set up with the, with the municipalities. Lake Placid construction is about done, and they're proceeding now on, starting on Avon Park. So I know it's been a little bit longer than expected, but the wheels of government turn slowly. When you're working with other governments and municipalities, you get attorneys involved and other boards involved, so there's a lot of questions and things that go back and forth. You know, the county's position on that with the municipalities is because, you know, under the old recycle, curbside recycling program, that, that was only offered to those in the unincorporated area of Highlands County that get garbage service from the county, not to the municipalities. They have their own garbage service. Well, now that we've opened and quit the curbside recycling and the drop-off locations, we're not checking IDs, of course. We'll take recycling from anybody because that's what we want to do and try to do our best as we can there. So that was kind of, I guess, for lack of their skin in the game, is to provide the location, the real estate for these locations. So that was their contribution towards being able to offer recycling to their, to their residents within the municipalities because none of the municipalities have a recycling program. The county was the only one that had curbside, and we've talked about that before, why we had to change that. So, yes. So we're hoping June, July and August, 1st, Lake Placid, Avon Park, then Sebring. We will be doing some announcements in the newspaper and other things that, to get that information out. They will be manned three and a half days per week, and the hours will be posted, and they will be fenced and what have you. So they will not be able to accept any recycling on non-hours. And I know those hours will include half a day on Saturday for those people that are working. And one thing that we're going to be able to get back to recycling is glass county because we can use glass out at the landfill as cover. Believe it or not, we can crush up the glass and use it in a landfill to cover the landfill. So that's a plus because in curbside recycling, glass was not acceptable when it was mixed in with the other items. Because the beauty to drop off recycling locations is you eliminate the contamination in the recycling. And that was why we had to stop curbside. If anybody watched Fox 13 News this morning, the city of Bradenton recently is changing their curbside recycling. They're discontinuing it for the same reason, because of the contamination to the recycling. So this will, this will, this is a win-win, I believe, for everybody because we'll be doing what we're supposed to do as far as recycling. When they accept it, paper will go in a certain bin with the attendant there, glass will go in a certain bin. And when those items are separated, then there's a market for those items in the recycling stream. When they're all mixed together and they come out of a truck and you have to pick these things off a, off a conveyor line, okay? As you know, help is not easy to get these days. It's very costly and expensive to do that. And what the recycling brings just doesn't pay when you have to put that amount of labor into sorting recycling. So I think it's going to work out really good, and I'm, like you, looking forward to getting it started.
Does that answer it for you, Pat?
Yes.
Thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to the action agenda. This is just an update on security and code enforcement recommendations and specifics that you may have come up with. This is Chris.
Sure. And we've had discussions with staff over the last few weeks and at the last board meeting talked about trying to get some synergy with working with code enforcement and security. And we did a revised org chart, and what we've come up with as a proposal is really moving Bob Brumfield into the roads and drainage manager position, which George, who retired recently, was in. And then moving Bob Hiltz into lead at the code enforcement, and then having him hire a full-time security manager that would work under him. So while he would be running the code enforcement department, he'd also have security under him and working together to improve that patrol and notice of violations. And that, that also is salary neutral because those positions are open, so it's just moving across. The only other thing we had in there too is adding an administrative assistant under our finance position and also putting district website, community services, getting Kelly moved into that standalone. Right now she works under Ariel because she held that banner as director of community services and recreation. Kelly's mostly handling that, so it would be moving Kelly more into standalone. She's in charge. She'd be the person here when you're dealing with community service issues. And also taking the lead on the website and also website management and updates going under Deb.
Do you have the new chart for us?
Do we put it in the board? No.
Do we have copies of it?
Can you give me that, please?
It's not in the current.
I can get it to you. I'm sorry.
Well, let's do it this way, because I know it's probably better that they all see the new breakdown, and so get it to them this week.
Okay.
You guys look at it this week. If you have any questions or problems with it, we can discuss it at the next meeting. Otherwise, let me ask you this. I assume, I know the answer to this, but the monies, any salary adjustments are all in the current budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
So there's, the budget is the budget, Scott had it already included. So we're just looking to see if you guys agree with the new line.
Well, I, I just, I don't need to look at your flow chart. As long as you got the money, these are your employees. You're the one that's going to live or die with them. So it's okay with me, you just do what you think's the best for the district. Because we don't hire, we don't have anything to say with that. We have something to do with your job, but.
Several discussions, you know, that this didn't come from the top down, it came from the bottom up. And I worked closely with Bob Hiltz and Brumfield to see what's workable, workable for them and improve the organization and working together.
Okay. Let's send out the chart.
Do that today.
And you, do you have it?
Yep.
There was some on my desk. I don't know what they're.
I saw it with the meeting that I had with you. You showed it to me, so.
I can read something.
I don't, maybe the rest of them didn't meet with you. I don't know, but I saw it.
We'll get it out.
And I did have a, I had a conversation, a short phone conversation with Mark Breed, our special magistrate, about the, we talked, the last minute, we talked about the training, you know, what sort of training is required for. And he says that based on what we, what's currently in our ordinance, that there is no requirement that, that our code enforcement people or the people that go around to look for code enforcement, as long as they've been trained as to our code enforcement, there, there's no state license that they would be required to, to hold, at least, you know, based on how things are worded now. The one thing he did mention is that, you know, he, he comes in and sits as special magistrate, what is it, twice, twice a month, I think?
On foot.
And so if we start having an increase in citations and notices that require, that where people aren't paying and want to go talk to the special magistrate, you know, that may, that may be an unforeseen cost increase if, if, you know, if it doubles or triples.
Yeah.
The number of cases that he has to deal with. But other than that, he says that we have the, you know, if Bob were to train our security people to look for or to, to issue code enforcement notices and citations, as long as we can document some sort of training on our end, he's, he doesn't have an issue with that.
I know this is, I know George has already left, so I would like to see this implemented as quickly as possible. I don't want to wait necessarily till October.
So would I. So would I, because that's what they need, you know? And Chris.
Were you thinking about waiting till October?
No.
Okay.
And Chris, I think it's a good move.
Okay.
You know, I think they work together anyways, and, you know, Bob's will do it so long time, so I think it's a great move you're doing.
You guys okay with this?
Bob and Bob? Yes. Yes.
Okay. So we'll say early congratulations to you both.
Bob.
I would, however, like to know when you guys, when you will come back to us with Bob and explain to us exactly what security and code enforcement are going to do going forward, including that brochure that you had discussed, updating it, et cetera, et cetera. So how long do you think you need? When will be a good time to have that conversation?
Well, certainly, we could even bring that forward with the revised org chart and a business plan for that unit at the next board meeting or the one after. I'd say let's.
You think you can pull it together by the next board meeting?
By the 20th, maybe not. I'd say the one after, though.
I'd be more than happy to give you like a month and a half.
There's a lot of things on everybody's plate. I understand that. I just want this addressed sometime this summer so that these guys can, we can all agree the direction they're going to go in and get it going.
We'll, we'll formalize it and get it within 30 days back to you.
Right. Because we got to really move on this. Bob, Bob Hiltz is working two shifts every once in a while, and he shouldn't be working two shifts, you know? So I really.
Let me just say, hopefully in the budget, there, there should be no two shifts at all. So I hopeful, I'm hopeful that you guys have put in the budget enough to cover, enough coverage that we don't have this problem.
You have to get out.
Bob, come up here.
My problem, Mr. Brooks, right now is I'm down five people. And that's why I'm, that's the problem.
Are you down five people because they're northerners?
No, I've lost two. Well, actually, I lost four and I got one down with a health issue right now and it's, there's just, I got to cover 21 shifts and I've only got 17 people to cover, only 17 shifts to cover, so the extra four, I'm covering. And I'm not punching in or anything like that, I'm just kind of handling them for you because I don't want to make the budget go way out of whack, but.
And I appreciate that, but that's, I'm trying to avoid this.
I know, and that's what I'm, trust me, I'm 100% with you on that. I'm 100% with you.
Maybe you need more than, how many people you down?
Well.
Maybe you need six.
Here's our other issue, the, the present condition with this lab corps, they're being like, okay, well, we have another person online waiting to come onboard, waiting for clearances. And once I get that, I can cover the shifts. There is that adequate area?
Wait, 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 I want to have a question, how are you going to?
How am I going to cover the shift with the extra person?
Are you putting one person on or two?
I'm putting.
Now, let us know today what you need.
Well, we have two positions available, if I can get this person hired, Mike, I can get the shifts covered.
Okay.
And then Ariel and I and Chris will sit down and talk about that extra person that we usually have as an on-call.
I have a question about this, because this has been coming up over and over and over, what is the problem with lab corps?
It's not a conversation we need to have here, we'll talk, can we talk about it offline?
Can we do that? You can do that.
Yeah, you can come see me.
Okay, all right.
Come see me.
Okay.
All right, so all I'm trying to do is, this is budgets.
Right, I appreciate that.
If you don't have enough people and you start doubling up in the fall, I'm not going to be a happy guy. I'm asking you now to make sure you have enough people.
Tell us what you need.
I got it, I can hire two more people and I can get it done.
Right, don't, tell us what you need.
You guys get together, make sure that the monies are there for what you need to get done.
Okay.
It's very simple.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's say in 30 days, Chris will come back to us and talk to us about how we're going to proceed and.
We'll have a formal business plan, it'll just lay it out, how they're going to work together, who's going to hand out citations, you know, how it's going to move forward.
Just so we all know what's going on and we all can support him in getting it done.
Right. I also believe that there comes a time when a shift, if it's an exception occasionally, it doesn't need to be covered. The people that won't know that we don't have security running at that particular time. So I think the fact that we're trying to cover every shift every time with overtime, to me, I don't know that that's really necessary. But we advertise 24-hour security, okay? So we advertise that and everything. So, I mean, yes, I agree, there were times that we, you know, we wouldn't cover a shift, but Bob's been trying to avoid that and.
I understand that, but an exception.
Right, except, exactly, an exception.
I just don't believe that we need to be covering with overtime if it's once in a while. To me, that's just a.
I don't think you use an overtime, are you?
Period, yeah, I agree. But, but, but that's not right either. If you're putting in the hours, you should be paid, so to say that you're not punching the clock, that's not right either.
What you said gets us in a lot of trouble.
Wow, you leave.
I mean, you're working off the clock, which we theoretically, I don't believe can allow.
Unless we put them on a salary.
You guys get together and come back with what you want to do.
Right, if we put them on a salary.
This is the third time I've asked, come on.
You heard it. You know what you need.
Any other comments on this? All right, 30 days unless I hear difference, so the second meeting of June.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay, the next is discussion of popular landowners' board seats, I guess this is me, I brought it up a couple of months ago. And my feeling is, based on the last landowners election that we had, that we're just kidding ourselves by continuing to have a landowner's seats. There's no participation, there's no interest. We do pay money to have an election, which I think we're throwing out the window to a certain, not now, we're not throwing it out the window, we have to pay the money to do the election, so that's, that's proper. But we could save the money that we spend on elections, which is not a great deal of money, I admit. But I just don't see the benefit any longer of having a landowner's seat. My feeling would be to go to all popular seats. I know we would have to go to the county to ask their permission and blessings on this.
Correct, yeah, it'll require an ordinance change.
But I just don't see why we would not do that, that's my opinion, you guys have any opinion?
Yeah. Well, for one thing, as far as the number of people that voted, I, I shut off my campaign right after Sherry got hurt. So I know I could have gotten at least, excuse me, had I gone and done what I had planned on doing, I would have got at least another 100 votes. Easily. All right, so that's only, that's 300. My guess is that the general election that's coming up in November, because it's not a presidential election, is probably going to have about the same interest in the supervisors here in Sunning Lake. Unless there's something dramatic that they want to vote on, they're not going to be going to the general election. And while you did have a big turnout for the general election that occurred when you guys ran, Ray, it's because it was a presidential election also, and that's why the turnout was significant as it was. I still believe that the people.
Significant, it was only 500 votes, I think they both won with 500.
Anyway, all right, but I still, my biggest thing is, I believe that there, these people that are covered under it, landowners, should have some say in what, how the assessments are used through the supervisors that they elect. To do away with the Canadians and/or anyone else out of country, plus snowbirds that aren't Florida residents, I don't believe this proper, they're paying assessments, they at least have a voice. You know, that's my opinion. Anybody else?
I, I don't care either way, but if we do do away with the landowner issue, we're going to have to do something about, my election is between the two. And I know if we switch, it's going to have to go to have to be added a year to the, to the thing, so that's just something, if, if we decide to do that, we got to address that and. So, you know, it's.
Yeah, I think that's the only thing that I would really have to say is, if you decide to go to all five, we'd have to figure out how you want to do, it would have to be a 3-2 split. You know, one, you know, on, on, on even years not divisible by four would be two people and presidential election years, it would be three people. And the way the rules work is, it's, you, people, if there's three seats open and there's only three candidates, then that's it, you know, you don't have to have an election. And if there's four candidates, then the people, the people with the three highest votes would become supervisors. So you don't, we wouldn't be voting for individual seats, it would be these three seats are open. We're going to have, we've got four people running, and so people would get to pick three of the four and whoever, you know, whatever three people had the highest number of votes, those would be the three people seated. The only other, I mean, the other potential alternative is if we could do a 2-2, you know, four and one, have one remaining landowner seat. And then we would have, but like I say, it's, it's up to you guys how you want to do it. But I, I agree that voter turnout has not been fantastic for the, you know, if we're trying to give Canadians, the part-time Canadians a chance to vote, they're not really taking advantage of it.
I mean. Just the, I mean, everybody who's a resident has the ability to voice their opinion on anything that we do.
Correct.
Whether I'm elected one way, Michael's elected another way, it doesn't really matter. They can come and say, I think this budget is wrong. I think you shouldn't be raising the golf assessments, or I think you're screwing us as, as non-golfers, or whatever they may say. It doesn't really matter if they support you for an election, they can say anything they want at any given time. So to say that we have to give them the opportunity to support individual candidates, I don't know what that gets us. They can support or voice their opinions on the board, against the board anytime they want. Whether they nominate the person or not.
They don't have a vote.
They have a vote, we have the votes, they don't have a vote either way.
No, but they have a vote on who represents them.
But, no, I'm just saying, that's my, my opinion, and my opinion is that quite frankly, I don't think they care. No, and that's no offense to them, if I was in their situation and I had five people on the board running it, unless I knew that I had an individual problem that they're causing me, I'd say they're doing a good job.
And the only time that they show up is when it's for golf.
Yeah, like I said, one of the big things I would say is that, you know, if we, if you make it five popular seats, at least people, the people, people are, they know when voting, when vote, when the normal voting day is, our landowner vote, I mean, unless people are, are really invested in the, in the system, they're not coming to it. You know, we, we've seen the, I mean, I'm not saying we've had a bad turnout, but we by no means had a turnout like we do on regular election days for our landowner elections.
But I will say that they, probably the largest group we ever had was the one that we, when they said they were going to take it away, they're the ones that showed up.
That, I have to agree with that, when, when they know that they're, they may be losing something, they, they do get very vocal, as any group would, I mean, that's just normal. Does it justify having landowner's seats versus all popular seats? That's something I guess we got to decide, I, I, I don't know how we proceed, Beverly, you want to jump in here?
It doesn't matter to me one way or the other, I do, how much is the cost involved and as far as the timeframe to get it changed to all? One way.
Well, it's not going to happen before this year's election, obviously, so I think that we could, if, if, if the, the board decides that that's what they want us to do, you know, the revising the, or coming up with a new proposed ordinance would not be difficult, I'm, you know, I'm sure that I could take care of that in a couple of months, you know, at, at, at most. We'd have a couple of board meetings, make sure you guys are happy with the wording, and then we take it to the county to get implemented. That'll probably take more time than what it would take to actually draft up the, you know, the proposed ordinance. So, but I can't imagine it would take more than two or three meetings for you guys to, you know, accept or come to a decision about the, the language that we're going to use.
I mean, we don't have to decide today, we can say, you want to give it two weeks and then we'll vote on it, I mean.
If you think you're going to have a big turnout for this general election, I'm submit to you that.
I don't think we're going to have a big turnout for anything.
Well, I think that would be, my recommendation is, is to, you know, talk to some, you know, talk to the people that are going to be affected, and then we need to pick a date and have a public hearing about what the plan is. And they can come out and voice their opinion and you guys can, we'll take a vote and, and we'll do whatever the decision is.
Well, if we were to do that, and that's not a bad idea, but I would probably then say we can't do it until the people from up north come down.
I would agree with that.
In all fairness to them. So that would mean we probably would have to postpone this until October.
Well, if you could, might as well, I suggest that you postpone it till November and see how many people turn out for the general election.
I can tell you how many. I got to tell you, based on the last general election that we had, there was three candidates. There was a total of 2,300 votes cast for all three.
Because it was a presidential election.
Right, so this one would be less. Right, but we had 200 votes for the landowner's seat, of which, I can't say, of which a lot of them were gotten by going into the clubhouse and, you know.
Prox, prog, or proxy.
I mean, let's face it, there is not a lot of support for the board. There isn't, from the community, I mean, that's just a fact, you guys, you can either accept that or not accept it, that is a fact. So what is right for the board to do?
So you're saying you want everybody on a level playing field? So the landowners can't go in and have cocktail parties and solicit votes?
Right. That's what I'm throwing.
And removing landowner's seats would remove corporate, removing landowner's seats would remove the corporate influence.
I like that too.
Now, again, to David's point before, if we want to have an open meeting when the northerners are back, the Canadians are back, and see what, how, what the reaction is from them, I can wait till then, I'm just trying to get it right. I have no problems with waiting until they come back and having an open meeting.
Okay, if they come like they did the last time, what's going to change? I mean.
Nothing.
To me, it doesn't, I don't intend to run again anyway, so as far as my personal feeling about. You know, we've been dragging this for years, for years and years, this has been going on. Nobody wants to make a decision, are we going to make a decision or are we going to just go back to what we used to? But we keep dragging it down the road. Well, why don't we make a decision what we want to do for a change right up, right now? And only David take it, you know, draw everything up and then bring it back to us and decide what to do. I mean, we keep dragging everything, everything's weight.
All right, what's the consensus on taking a vote today?
It's on the action agenda, you guys can, if you guys, if you want to take a vote to give us direction, even if it's as simple as, you know, draft up some proposed language so that we can.
Anybody interested in voting today to find?
Yes, I vote that we make a draft, bring back to us. Yeah, I have to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion that you make a drafts so we can have everybody on the same, do away with the landowner's seats and have everybody just popular votes.
I'll second it. All right, we got a motion and a second, if there's any public.
Any public comments?
Where's North Ross?
I guess we vote.
Okay. Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
No.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes.
All right, so just to make sure I understand, I'm going to start, I'll start drafting something and I can, we'll bring something whenever you guys want it. You know, if you want to give me a timeframe now, or say it's sometime, we'll, we can bring it before the board in October when the, do you want to give me a timeframe or you just want me to get started?
I personally think if we're going to hear from the people that we're taking the vote away from, we would wait till October.
But you need to bring us something like in September for us to look at, I mean.
Okay, yeah, so we'll, we'll can bring something, then when we have a finalized version, we'll have a public hearing in October or when the.
Okay. So you're going to bring us something in writing in 30 days, how's that?
I can do something in 30 days.
Yeah, 30 days. Second meeting in June. And then we'll go from there. Add-on items, petitions and communications. State reports, golf.
Good morning, supervisors, Jimmy Murphy, golf course superintendent. Gave you guys the written report, we're going to go over our closure, I think, later on in this. Next week, we're going to be airifying Turtle. So be closed till the 4th? Saturday, the 4th, we'll reopen Turtle, but we're going to airify fairways, we're going to verticup fairways and then try to get the baulk app of the pre-emergent out on there before we actually move over to deer. Right now, we pretty much got everything in for the irrigation, so we're ready to go. Talked with Carl a couple of times, he's going to try to get down a couple of days ahead of time and do an assessment on all the parts. The pipe was being extruded this week, so hopefully we'll start seeing that here shortly as well. Other than that, like I said, everything else that we're doing is inside the report. And Mike and I have met this week a couple of times, Hurley, and we've reviewed all the equipment and we're still wait, a couple of options we're looking at is possibly, I'm going to get a purchase price on the current lease that we have just to see what it is in comparison and then give you guys a couple of options and possibly see what we can do with the equipment package.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Yes.
Any questions, do you guys want to go over the the Sunning Lake, his, his plan of closings?
The closures.
That he sent us, do that now?
Right, can't hear you. Right, what did you say?
Let's go over the Sunning Lake Golf Club, plan of attack for closings and openings and cost management or cost maintenance starting in May. You want to tell us what you gave us here?
Yeah, good morning supervisors, Mike Lemire.
Yeah, good morning, Supervisors. Mike Lemire, General Manager, Golf Club. So basically, this, this here is more of a, is a summary page of the same thing as the calendar that we gave you before. Hopefully, this kind of lays it out a little bit more. So we gave you kind of a month by month of what will be going on on the golf courses. And then on the, the final page, we gave you an actual closure summary, so you can see what courses are closed when. So as you see, as Jimmy just stated, that May 23rd, which is Monday, we are closing Turtle Run for aerification, and it's going to be... Fourth, which is a Saturday. And we've laid that out through the summer. The only thing that I will, you know, just say is, we don't plan on any changes on this, but it is always possible. Weather's always a factor. You know, this is kind of a living, breathing document. But this is the game plan as we stand today.
Any questions?
Isn't, the, the four aerations that you plan on doing, is that, seem to me like it's an overkill? I mean, I know most courses do it spring and fall, but you're talking doing four times. And, and I got to, I got to ask, you had, you found out that you only had a half inch last year of root. But yet, we didn't do any air. Well, if you did any aeration, I don't recall it being done.
I did it in June last year, Mr. Herrick.
Why, and this is water over the dam, I understand it, but why did you not aerate more last year?
I got here in June, and, I mean...
Well, you're talking about June, July, August, and September. I, I don't understand, Jimmy, if it was, if it was that significant of a problem of only having a half inch root. Why did we wait until all of this happened, and now we're going to do, we got to do four of them? I, and maybe four is right, but it seemed like it's an overkill to me, especially when you didn't do it.
Well, I think the biggest thing, Craig, right now, is looking at your estric test and looking at how much organic matter's in the greens. I just think that, and if I, if you'd like to ride, I'll show you how much root you have on them now. So I, I can't say that we had as much organic, but until you do the estric test, we wouldn't know on how much. Should I have probably done an estric test when I got here, most likely? I mean, I'm going to do...
Well, you tested the greens right after you got here.
That was a soil sample. That wasn't the estric test like what we just got. So the estric test we just had done was basically showing you all the organic, and the thatch, and the percolations, and the fines and everything in the soils.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that have showed you the root issue at the time?
Well, I mean, we, we, we kept taking the roots. We look at them all the time and make sure we have roots. And in the wintertime, they, they get shallower. And it just, I mean, if you look at them right now, they're almost three inches, four inches. And I don't know if, how long it's been since we've had a three or four inch root on these greens. I just think that the more organic we can get at them, and the better that they drain, the healthier that they'll be. I mean, and normally...
Does it take four?
I did three. I mean, when I was running 35 golf courses last year, we, we tried to get, I mean, in the south, we tried to get three aerifications.
A minimum of three.
Right.
Depending on, on, on the outside courses. You have to aerate three times. And if you want to do a lighter one, the fourth time you can, but you need to do three aerations.
Well...
Mics, please.
I guess maybe this wasn't what we were supposed to be talking about. Craig, what, can you talk to your mic? I can't hear what you're saying.
It's not recording. We can hear them. We can hear them. It's just that it's not going through the mic, and it's not going through the speakers. They can't pick it up for the meeting minutes.
I'd like to hear what you say. Sure?
He's not happy. And, and really...
If we need four, we need four. That's all. It just seems to me like it's an overkill from where we've been. That's all.
Yeah, I, I mean, go ahead.
You're the ones that are, you're responsible for the course. You do what you're spo, what you think you got to do.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions besides mine? I have questions. On, I assume now, this, this plan of attack through next May replaces that other stuff that you gave us, correct?
The 12-month calendar?
Yeah, that's gone, and this is in, right? Which is fine. I'm just asking...
To be honest with you, I, i- if it's all right with you all, I'd like to give it to the golf committee. And we use it for ourselves.
What, the 12-year calendar, or this?
The 12, 12-month calendar, yes, sir. The only reason why is because it helps us. It's just like, we, we went through it, marked up a couple of tournaments that we had for the fall for members again yesterday. It's a revolving thing that I can give the super...
You can give it to them, that's fine.
Right.
What I'm asking is, the cost maintenance that you've listed here, that's it to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And all of those additional maintenances, maintenance to be done after September the 2nd, there are no course closings. Is that correct?
Correct. Just for that nine o'clock on Monday mornings. Yes, sir. And that's, that's so we can keep ninja timing through the winter and doing the light talk sessions.
That's fine. The other question I had is, this comment on, on July 15th, Deer Run closes through August 28th. Both courses will be utilized on the weekends for major tournaments in August. What major tournaments do we have in August?
So we have...
Because we don't know anything about it yet.
Yeah, you, you know about them. We have them, they're yearly tournaments. It's the Sartoma Two Man and the Firemans.
And let me ask you this. Is it not going to be equipment or anything on Deer Run at this time that we have this, this tournament?
Well, we'll be...
Are these guys just going to pull out? I'm serious.
The, the, the big stuff is just going to be a track code pulling in the big main line. So that's going to basically stay on the outsides of the golf course. The only, and then when they go to pull in the laterals for the heads and the fairways, it's literally going to be pulled in, and it's going to disturb about six to eight inches.
If any damage comes to the course, because you guys have tournaments, you're paying for it. I'm just...
Fine, yeah.
You're going to pay for it. I mean, if you guys feel comfortable in doing this, that's fine, but if anything comes of it, we're not paying for it.
As far, you're talking about what, to the equipment?
To the course.
To the course.
Anything. I mean, you're going to, you're going to stop your irrigation program, move stuff around to allow a tournament to take place. I'm just telling you, I don't think that's a good idea, but if you want to do it, you're doing it at your own expense.
Fair enough.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
Maybe.
No, maybe.
Well, you got one vote here that's going to make you pay for it.
Oh, you would rather we pay for it?
I, I don't know. I have that.
Certainly helps.
We had damage before, and we had somebody not make them pay nothing, so...
I will certainly bring it to a vote.
Unless you want to talk about that one.
Make sure that Mr. Gilpin is happy to vote on it, so...
So, Michael, you feel confident what you guys are doing?
Absolutely.
Okay, if you feel confident, I'm okay with it.
Let me ask you another question. You're going to have various nines open on both courses at the same time. How are you planning on directing traffic?
It will be, it, it can definitely be a, a slight juggle to do this, but 90% of our play is going to be member play. They know where they're going. It's just going to be communication, and more than that, most of the golfers we have in the summertime, they, they know what they're doing. If we have a hotel group that doesn't know where to go, then obviously, we're going to have to help them out. But it, it will be a, a little bit of a challenge, but it's not going to be significant.
You have no outside play for, for the most part?
We do.
Going from Deer Run 9 to Turtle...
One.
Turtle 1?
Yeah.
That'd be fun.
It's not, it's not, I mean, it's a, it's a slight challenge, but it's not.
Right, it's been done before.
Yeah. They've been, most of, like I said, most of them have been here before. They know where they're going. Well, we do a really good job. I mean, we communicate to get them down to Turtle Run number one on a daily basis. It's not going to be, it's not going to be that much different to say, okay, when you're done 9, now you're going here. I mean, we send them from the pro shop there every day. So it's, like I said, it'll be a small challenge, but it's not going to be a, it's not going to be a big deal.
So, Michael, you're going to have staff on to direct the...
It'll be, if, if need be. I mean, like I said, we, we know the T-shirt. We know who's been here before. It'll be, it's, it's not going to be significant.
Okay. We'll wait and see how that works out, Michael. Do you want to talk?
Should we not share maybe this with the golf membership? So that they know what, when the courses are closed and what's being...
Yes, we, we plan, we do plan on that. We wanted you to see it first. So it'll probably go out next week.
Well, I think it should be in your newsletter. It should be posted in the board on the members' room.
Right.
At the very least.
Yeah, we just wanted to get, get Charles' listings on it, and then we'll make it public.
Okay, while you're up here, let's finish you off and just briefly discuss about this...
Get us out of here.
I got a mental block on this...
Org chart?
Yeah, organizational chart.
Tab 10, or 11. 11.
This is much better, but I look at this, and I still don't see manager coverage during the hours of the restaurant. So tell me how you're going to do that. You keep telling me you're going to do it, but I don't see it.
I'm not 100% following you from an org chart to manager coverage. If we're looking at the restaurant, you can see that we have our new F&amp;B manager, Sandra. And down under her hierarchy, there's a service manager, that, both of which are in, controlling the service staff. So in the absence of, you know, an F&amp;B manager, you have the service manager. You can call her service manager, call him assistant manager. You're irrelevant, but they all are in charge of the service staff. So I don't, I don't know how you're going to pull that much information out of an org chart.
So you, the service manager and the F&amp;B manager will cover the restaurant all 80 hours of so that it's open?
Yes, there will always be a manager on duty. Yes.
A designated manager who has no other responsibility but to take care of the people working there and the customers.
I will not go on record saying that there will always be a manager during the full operation. I don't think it's most efficient. If it's 7:30 at night, I don't think we need to pay a manager to watch the bartender serve two people. That does not make sense. So in that sense, no. But when we are operating on a normal basis, where we have the need for a manager, which will be every day, yes.
Michael? I have notes. I have not met nor seen either one of these people. I have seen them sitting behind a desk. Tuesday before last, I sat down at 11, at 11:59. I did not get recognized until 12:20. I did not get my food ordered and did not get served until after 1 o'clock. This past Tuesday, three tables sat down at 12 o'clock, and we did not get our food until 1 o'clock. I was there three hours on Tuesday and two and a half hours yesterday. I never saw one of your people come out and ask, or even walk through to see if anything was going on. Mike, this is unacceptable. I, I don't, I'm just telling you, fix the problem.
Yes, I, I agree. We, we definitely will.
But Sandra doesn't work Tuesday.
Sandra has not been here the last two Tuesdays. One of... Yeah.
My understanding, she works six, six days and has Tuesday off?
That is not correct. She's not here six days. That's not the plan, but...
Who is service manager?
The service manager can, can change from, from time to time. We haven't necessarily hired a full-time person. We've, we've had a couple in the past. We've used Kaylee to do it. She's kind of stepping in that role right now. Cheyenne has done it in the past, but Cheyenne has since moved away. So we, we are using basically Kaylee, if you will, at this time to, to fill in that role until we find a, the, a permanent solution. But yes, I, I will ask that, you know, we got to give Sandra just a little bit of time. She, she is definitely spending a little bit more time in the office than she probably will be in the future. She has a lot of systems she has to go through to learn of, of, of all the processes, inventory, control, and, and a few things. So although I, I 100% want to address your issues, absolutely. She's, I really think you guys are really going to like her, and I'm going to start pushing her to, you know, as she gets kind of settled in, that she, you're going to see her a lot more. I, I definitely will say that.
Obviously, she got a problem on Tuesday.
Right, so...
Tuesday's is a busy day.
Tuesday at lunch is, it has been busy, yes. Yes, it has.
The day we're close, Tuesday. Michael, Michael, what I like to see, okay?
Do you have a lead?
Hello?
It's not me just doing it.
You're on.
You hear me? Michael, what I like to see is your manager from go to table and table.
Yes.
Introduce herself, and let people know who she is, right? Because I think that's going to help you, it's going to help us, right?
Absolutely.
I mean, where I came from, we had the same problem. And, and I think if they go table to table and then do, you know, introduce herself, you know, start a relationship. And that's what you got to train, Michael. That's all on you.
Absolutely. And, and the, the best part, 100% I agree with you, and that's the best part about Sandra is I don't have to train her to do that. She understands that's her role. We've had that conversation. And I promise you, you will, you will definitely be seeing her. 100%, absolutely.
I would like to thank you for hiring Frankie back.
You're welcome.
But Frankie's back?
You don't have to thank me for that. I'm happy that he wanted him. It was a pleasure to have him back.
I don't, I...
Sandra should come out and watch Frankie work. Sandra should come out and watch Frankie work on Tuesday and Wednesday and see what, that would be a good example, because he doesn't stay behind the bar.
No, I know.
He's all over the floor.
Right, and that's, that's, that's the, that's the example that we all need to live by.
I would like to propose, am I allowed to do this?
We'll do it, and then we'll talk.
I would like to propose that we have a manager on duty at the restaurant every hour that it's open. Can I do that? Obviously, he...
Yeah, you can make a, you can make a, you can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we have a manager on duty when we're open.
Could we make it while serving food? Because there's no sense to have a manager on a Sunday afternoon when they're only, you know, I mean...
To watch the bartender.
To watch the bartender.
Serve two people.
I mean, I agree with you, Ray. Ray, I agree with you, as long as they're serving food. You know, I mean, I've been in, I worked this business a lot of years, right? And if you have the right bartender, okay, you're good, okay? When they're serving food, absolutely, we need, need somebody there with them. You know, I mean, it costs a lot of money to keep someone there.
But not sitting behind a desk. If you want her there, let her come in and do her work from 9 o'clock in the morning until 11 o'clock, and when they start serving food, then have her out on the floor.
Absolutely, right. Right.
But this is... Waitresses ought to understand when somebody sits down at the table, it ought to be somebody going there and asking them if they want something. I mean, that's pretty dang easy, ain't it? Then why doesn't it happen? We have to wait for people to come over. It doesn't make any sense.
I, I understand, and that's...
Now you don't. That's the problem.
That's what I hired the new person for. She's, she's 100% on board with that.
My point to you is, as good as your wait, waitress staff or waiter staff may be, if there is nobody there to give them direction, they are not, they probably won't do the job that's necessary to be done. You need a manager to say, Mr. Herrick, go over to that Mr. Schumacher's table and see if everything's okay. You should be going around every table and saying, thank you for coming. Is your meal good?
Absolutely.
Whatever, like all the other restaurants in town do.
I 100% agree.
But we can't seem to get it to happen.
No, like I said, I, she's, she's been here like a week and a half.
To do with it. She's one person. She can't do it by herself.
And, and in, in the reference that we're talking to of, of time when the service is needed, we 100% are going to have a manager on duty. But I'm not going to say 100% of the time, there's always going to be a manager there, because it's, it's not ideal. If it's 7:30 at night, and there's two people standing at the bar, we don't need to pay a $15 employee...
Being served.
Right. As long as there's food being served.
An hour after food service stops, because there's still people at the tables, right?
Right, and that's going to be the majority of the time.
Service stops, you don't need a manager.
And that's, that's where I agree with you.
A bartender who you say, okay, you're the manager.
I understand, and I'm, I've, and you got to understand, I, it's not that we're not going through the same labor shortage that the district's going through. Obviously, they're having issues as well. And then we're not, we have not been, you know, outside of that lines. It, it took us a while to, to find some right people. We're getting there. I understand we, we have issues. I really feel confident that we have the right person in line to make these things happen. She's been here two weeks. She's had a lot to learn on the back of the house, and I promise you, you're going to see her a lot more, and you're going to see progress being made. That I do promise you.
Michael, you're gonna present your budget in two weeks. You make sure you can cover what we're asking you to do.
Fair enough.
Or don't present the budget.
I understand you 100%.
And I think we should know, you said lead bartender here or banquet captain. Who are those people or do we not know yet?
Yes, so.
Well, put their names down.
So, correct. So. They're correct.
Do we have a lead bartender?
Yes.
His name is Frankie?
Frankie was the lead bartender. Prior to his departure, Michaela became the lead bartender. And right now, as Frankie comes back, we're gonna see how that's gonna work out and it may become Frankie again. Yes. I totally agree. I totally agree.
You know, all we're trying to do is to help the restaurant's business. That's all we're trying to do. And you would think that we're trying to rob you blind.
No, it's fine. And if we want to do that, I can adjust the labor side of things. But we also sit in these meetings and you asked me about labor today. You know, if you want me to, if you want me to manage the labor properly, you need to let me do it.
If you give good service, you're gonna do more volume.
Abs.
That's gonna happen.
I understand.
If people like coming to our restaurant, they'll come back.
I understand.
Michael, do they have name tags over there?
Our employees?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Well, couldn't we put on their name tag, you know, like if there's, you know, who's ever in charge? All right, so you have five people. Okay, you have five people on your staff, okay? Why can't you put?
I totally can.
What they are, so then the residents know who to go to if there's a problem. I mean, what Beverly just said is absolutely ridiculous that she sat there that long.
No.
I would have never sat that long, but I don't have a lot of patience, but I would never, but she's right. So, you know, I mean, we gotta start somewhere. We all wanna work together and let's get this better. But what Ray's telling you, he's right.
No, I totally understand. I totally understand and I'm not arguing with anybody. I'm just saying it 100% of the time is not gonna be the number. It's gonna be when it's, it's gonna be the majority, it's gonna be the majority of time. It's gonna be exactly what you want, but I'm just not gonna say 100%. It's gonna be what you want.
Why don't you get to 50%? Hell, we'd take that right now. You can't even get up, you're at bat and you just like have the bat over your shoulder. You're not doing anything. Take the swing and see what happens.
You got it.
But Michael, I'd like you to see you go to the name tags and, and you know, if you give somebody a name tag and tell them they're in charge, they're gonna feel better.
I mean, we keep having this argument to get you more people. It's ridiculous.
As long as you're good with the labor number, we'll have as many people as you want.
I don't know what the labor number is. Why don't you present it like we asked and see what happens?
I will do that.
Any other questions? Any public comments on this? Thank you. Community service report.
Good morning supervisors. You've all been provided with a written staff update, but just a couple of things that I would like to add to that since this was distributed. I have a meeting set with a graphic designer marketing firm that's here local, if you will, with regards to template for the newsletter. That's gonna be on Monday. We're gonna start kind of putting together some ideas of what that would look like because it's scheduled for you guys to see the first draft of that, the second meeting in June. So just an update that we'll be working on getting that together and getting a good idea of what that'll look like so that we can meet that deadline for you. Also, insurance claim update with regards to the hailstorm damages. Because of the scope of the damages, this particular project, if you will, was assigned to, we'll say, an additional adjuster. So like a loss coordinator. They were on site yesterday with a consultant, if you will, that went around to take a look at all the damages. I believe that they only made it through district damages at this point, meaning district office, recreation, the maintenance building, things of that nature. And then they're scheduled, I don't know if they already have it on the books, but I know that they will be coming around to take a look at the golf course damages as well. So they compile that information, give us an estimate of what the damages are and we go from there. But just so you know that that is still a work in progress. Unfortunately, these kinds of things just kind of move a little slow. But they were on site yesterday. I met with that team yesterday. So we are still working on that. Also, update with regards to the dog park benches. The dog park benches are in. We're going to be, or there has been concrete ordered so that we can do the slabs for the concrete, for the benches. We ordered two per park and so as soon as that concrete is in, I've been working with Bob and they've been wonderful to help us and keep us updated and we will get those installed in both the small dog park and the large dog park. And those are my three updates since the last update. So if you have any questions.
Yeah, I have on the benches. I asked Chris, because I, when I read your stuff, it looks like you're gonna put them in. Where are you gonna put them? I mean, is there a plan? Can we see something where they're going? Because we wanna, maybe if we get a consensus to enlarge the dog park, change the stuff. I don't want to see benches just put in by Joubot without a plan. So that's my only question. I don't want to be critical, but I don't want any benches put in until the majority of us see where you're gonna put them.
Do you have recommendations of where you would like them?
Well, I wanted to meet you and talk to you, but I guess I was giving you a direction and I think you should meet with anybody of the supervisors who care about that dog park and get some ideas. But that, again, that's just me. I don't care, but I think if you have a plan, it's not gonna work because we might have to rip them up.
I think that's a good point. And since you brought it up, we'll have Supervisor Gilpin to work with you and placement of the dog benches.
Well, there's four benches out there right now.
I'll volunteer to go over there with Ariel. I know where all the irrigation is and stuff like that.
I ask Supervisor Gilpin to do that, please. Thank you.
And I'll do it, but I recommend, Mike, that you meet with Ariel too because I like ideas. I mean, I don't want you to tell her. I don't want me to tell her. I want us to tell her.
We'll get it done. We'll figure out. It's not, you know, brain surgery.
I mean, it's not that big a deal, but I don't want to give. I don't want to give direction, but I certainly don't want stuff put in that we might have to move.
Right. We are planning enlarging. That's a very good point.
If possible, then if I can recommend that maybe we do that next week, I don't want to necessarily hold up the project either. So if you guys are available next week, can coordinate that so that we can get some ideas of where you would like the benches placed.
Ariel, you call me when you're available and I'll meet you, okay?
Yep.
And call Mike too because Craig and Beverly has an idea, that's fine too.
Got it.
I trust their judgment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for, anything else that you have?
I might have been sleeping when you started.
That's okay.
Pickleball, resurfacing.
Okay, pickleball resurfacing. So this particular project being under 50,000 requires that the board obviously approve the project, which we did a while ago, and then it requires the three estimates. Sunday has worked very hard to try and get that third estimate. As I noted in the staff update, the issue we have is because it's kind of a niche type product. We were able to secure two, but we're having a hard time getting that third, which to be honest with you, isn't super uncommon for our area. So we do have the two estimates. The one, I believe, Chris, I don't want to speak out of turn here, but staff recommendation at this point would be to go with 90 construction. We do have the two estimates. So for 90, 90, the pickleball resurfacing for four tennis courts, eight pickleball courts is coming in just shy of 40,000. That is also the lesser of the two estimates. And that also does include the dual painting that we had talked about. They've been wonderful coming out and taking a look and they're very familiar, very established business and very respected in the industry. They came very highly recommended. So that would be the staff's recommendation. My understanding is they would be able to get to the project early August. We let them know that we have a deadline that A, we want it done before the end of the fiscal year and B, we had discussed and the board's direction was to move forward with the South Florida State College, the Heartland Senior Games, that pickleball tournament that we had discussed. So that's the beginning of November. So we would be well established and finished with the project before that happens. So we're confident that they would be able to meet that timeline. I think that the project itself, they expected to take two to three weeks once they got started.
Can we make a motion to move ahead with them or do we have to have this other thing?
No, no, that's just the purchasing policy and the board consists of spend policy. So if the board wants to make a motion and vote on, go ahead and directing that we negotiate a contract and bring that contract back, you can do that.
Well, I have a question before we do anything. Ariel, did Drew look at the specs? Did you give the specs? I mean, what's the thickness of everything and did Drew actually look at anything? Did you guys work together? I mean.
Contracts that we did when we first resurfaced them back in, was it 11 or 12?
Yeah, okay.
That's the only thing we would have to go by is what we originally did. I think it was a different company, wasn't it?
It was a different company. So this is a different company. And once we give them the go-ahead, obviously, some of those are gonna be, we'll get some of those specific details once we get into a contract. This is kind of just their estimate project based on the scope that we gave them. I'm happy to share that with Drew, but again, these folks are notorious. They do this for universities, very large universities. They're very well-versed in what kind of the specs would be for resurfacing these courts.
The only thing I would like to see is make sure Drew looks at them.
Sure.
And you guys work together on it, you know, and it's done. That's all I care.
We can review specs. That's not a, it shouldn't take long to do that.
The thickness of everything and, and you know, what they're gonna do, what they put down for sealer and everything, okay?
Yeah, and we need.
Yeah.
We'll do that and review warranty stuff. That's, I know that was big the last time.
The last time, yeah. We'll take a look at that. We'll make sure that Drew's involved.
How long's the project gonna take? Did they tell you?
Roughly two to three weeks. Yeah, we should be done with this well before the end of the fiscal year. So that was beautiful news for us.
And you said they were under, they were 40,000 or under?
They were, yes. They were. I believe the budget was, it was either 40 or 45. I can't remember which. But their estimate that they came back to us was 39,968.
With the lines that they're putting in for pickleball on the tennis courts, do we have to do anything as far as nets or buying any nets to make those pickleball courts or to make those converted courts?
My understa, sure, convertible, right? So my understanding is that there will be like another set of holes that are there. So kind of like where you would see like the net holes now that are flush, where you would put in the net if you ever had to take it down, they put a separate. What's the word I'm looking for? Yes, thank you. Where you can anchor those and move so that you move the net. So if you're playing tennis, the net goes this way in these holes. If you're playing pickleball, the net goes this way in these holes.
So that we use the same existing net?
No.
We would need a new net because, for pickleball, because these are additional, if you will, pickleball courts. So we currently have eight, but this is adding some. So we would need nets for that.
So how much is that gonna cost us?
They're not much. They would be something that would fall into our typical regular budget item, facilities, repair and maintenance type thing. That's not a major expense at all. Off the top of my head, I have no idea how much they cost.
The only concern I have is the, is make sure that, well, it must be in the specs, that the poles are put in the right spots, okay? Because that's your business.
Yeah, they were, 90 was actually the company who told us that this was even a possibility. Like I said, this is something they do all the time. This is not new business for them.
I would like to second Craig that we go ahead and move forward with this. Can we, can we go ahead and, how do I do it?
No, there's, yeah, you second the motion. The motion, someone made a motion that we're suspending the policy that requires three bids and we're gonna just, with three proposals, we're gonna go forward with the two for time purposes.
And I second.
Okay, there we go. Any more discussion?
Yeah, I just have one question. Would we be better off, you're gonna hate this, just building, spending 100,000 and going for that other money that we got last time and building a new set of pickleball courts if we really need them that badly?
If I were confident that it would only be 100,000?
I have the estimate. It was 86,000 when we did it three, four years ago. So I'm sure.
Wait, was that, that was for, that was for shuffleboard though, correct?
No. Would you like to see it?
I would love to see it. Yeah, great. I mean, that's obviously way more complex. You're talking about the land, you're talking about.
We have the land. It was in the original plan. It was to expand pickleball.
Okay, well, my recommendation for whatever it's worth would be we go forward with the resurfacing. That has to happen anyways. That's well past due. The courts need to be resurfacing. I think having the convertible courts between tennis and pickleball gives us the opportunity to see if those additional courts are even used or utilized. If the answer is no, and we don't find that we're using those additional pickleball courts, then I probably wouldn't recommend expanding the facility. If we have those four filled and we see that there's this great demand and now we've got all of our eight pickleball courts filled and these additional three or four, then maybe that would be something that I would suggest we consider.
And Ray, Ariel's absolutely right. You know, we gotta get that done for $40,000 to, you know, to upgrade everything. That's pretty cheap. Now, if you want to go with more pickleballs next year.
I'm just throwing it out. I mean, actually, I was wrong, but this included clearing of the land, which you've already done, includes some, it was $104,000 pickleball.
I thought it was 80.
I said I was wrong.
Oh, what? You said what?
But my question is, if pickleball is that much in demand and we're only gonna get bigger, is that something we want to entertain? In addition to, we have to redo the.
Sure, and that's what I was gonna say. I mean, I don't know that that stops us from continuing what we're doing right now. However.
Well, I don't know about converting to tennis courts. That's what I'm.
It's just a paint. So if we, if in five or seven years or however long it is, if we said, you know what, we want to make sure that, we want to take these back to just strictly tennis, then you do. It's just the paint over the resurfacing that lets you delegate which court is which. There's no structural changes to what's happening. So we're not.
Two holes.
Yes.
Okay. So I think at this point, what is the motion on the table? I'm sorry.
Motion is to suspend the purchasing policy that requires three proposals, except, and say, make a decision based on the two proposals that are already in our possession for time purposes in order to expedite the process.
Okay, that's the motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Beverly's second.
Beverly's second.
Okay, vote it. Oh, public comments? Vote it.
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin.
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley.
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
President Brooks.
Ariel, I have a question. I didn't want to say it while we were just before the vote, but I read in the paper two, three weeks ago that the same people that were here went to the county and the county's working on maybe doing a big pickleball project for them. I mean, is this just more BS or is this?
We have a meeting scheduled with them on the 30th.
We have a meeting scheduled with some of the pickleball representatives for Sun and Lake. I don't know, I didn't see the article, so I don't know what group specifically you're speaking about. I have been made aware, it's been an ongoing thing that there have been groups of pickleball players looking to construct courts in different locations. It's honestly kind of hopped all over Highlands County.
It was the same people that were here because I recognize the names. And they had quite a lengthy meeting with the county and.
And the county told them no.
No, they didn't. They told them they were gonna look into it.
Yeah, that, there, it's come up a lot for some different groups and I don't know that they've found somewhere to.
So you don't know anything more?
I have not seen that particular article. No, no.
I mean, we'll find out on the 30th, but I think I would still like to take the approach that it's for the district personnel first. If we can work it out where they could take advantage of the facility, that's fine. But the members, well, not the members, but the people living here.
The members, yeah, yeah. Members and residents.
All right, so then I'll propose a motion that we just, if the budget is $40,000, we'll give her 40, up to $40,000 to spend on asphalting and do it now. Right, can I do that motion?
Well, we need to come back with a contract. So, I mean, yeah.
We'll come back with a contract.
I'll message Sunday right now, let her know that that's the situation. I'm assuming then that means the board was okay with staff suggestion to go with 90 Sports. Okay, so I'll work with Sunday. We'll reach out to her. I mean, we'll reach out to 90 and get to work on a contract and try and get that. reach out to ninety and get to work on a contract and try and get that on the books, at least penciled in. So we'll, we'll get that contract and we'll, we'll keep you updated as to when we get that.
Can we have it by the next meeting?
Can we have the, the contract by next meeting? I would imagine so. Yeah, I, I would assume that's not gonna be an issue.
Okay. Any other questions for Ariel? Any questions from the public?
I have one question for Ariel. Ariel, um, over the last like eight, ten years, we always did a, um, um, or Bob did, so I don't know whose fault it, you know, who didn't do it, or what happened was, but the watch order. We would do a watch order, uh, at night, uh, and invite anyone that was leaving to come fill papers out, and you would explain what they did. We did not do that this year because I got two phone calls asking about watch orders, and I told them that I was retired, but I would check, um.
What does this have to do with community services?
Because community services used to run it.
Uh, at least not for the last four years that I've been here. This is actually the first I've ever heard of it, so.
Well, I would like to.
We can, I mean, we can definitely work with Bob.
I'd like to start that again for next year, you know, invite who's ever leaving, uh, cause, cause some people know about watchers, some people don't. And, um, so I'd like to get that on your agenda.
Well, we can work with security. That's not hard. We send out some emails and things of that nature. That's not hard.
Isn't that part of the, uh?
New residents, social?
It is, I don't know. It's.
Ish. I, I'm, what I'm assuming is this is just an opportunity for them to come and ask questions and get a little bit more detailed information if they have specific questions. Again, that's me making a bold assumption because I've never attended or participated yet, so.
I don't know if you were there the last couple ones, but we did on our own, but I know that, you, I mean, they used to put in a letter, and I like to make sure we continue on it. That's all.
Okay.
Okay?
Anything else from the public? All right, code enforcement. Bob?
Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Bob Brumfield, Sun and Lake Code Enforcement Officer. Last month of April, we had a hundred and twenty-five, uh, warning notices and picked up a hundred and thirteen signs. And I counted every single one of them. Most of them were hail damaged signs, just scattered all over the place, but they, they were all over. Uh, one update on the house on Granada at fifty-eight oh one. That's been fined since, I think, April sixth. The fines have accumulated up to about forty-six hundred dollars so far. Still no sign of anything going on there.
Have we talked to them at all?
Uh, it's, I, I've sent them multiple letters. Never had any contact with them. The county is the one that's doing the, the fining. It's not, it's not Sun and Lake, but, uh, um, I've never heard, had contact with them. I believe it started out as, uh, Gustavo Ibanez's property. I think he's the one that started it, and he sold it to Ford J's Corporation, and never heard anything other than they are mowing it, which is what we had liens on it for.
The parking violations, is that pretty much people just parking on grass?
Yes, not on a prepared surface. Yes, that's correct. We are definitely working on, um, uh, doing away with, uh, repeat violators as far as sending out notices of violations. Once I do that, then I, I send them a citation. We've sent out, I believe, four notices of violation so far, but those people have not parked on, uh, they're parking on a prepared surface now. Two of the four made their own little areas with gravel, which is acceptable by our, our ordinance, and the other two have continued to park on their driveway. Most of those are new, either the forty-seven, uh, forty-three of them are, are ones that I haven't seen other, otherwise. I know probably about eight or ten of those were having social gatherings of some sort or other.
Okay. Any questions for Bob?
Uh, yeah, I have a question. Bob, Bob, do you have any, uh, uh, numbers over the last year, what you collected on liens, your department?
Uh, I don't have anything since last year, but, um, I do have some figures I got from Amanda.
Well, no, that, that's right. Can you bring it back next meeting? Oh, can you bring it back next meeting? I like to know what we've collected on leads from you. I'm not sure.
Well, since, uh, June twenty-third of last year, we had collected a hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Wow, good.
And there's another fifty-nine thousand seventy-three dollars and fifty-four cents that are not collected. So that's a total of two hundred and twenty-six thousand three hundred and sixteen.
You have fifty-nine thousand outstanding?
Correct. This is of June of last year, and I don't have any more recent figures. Amanda was gonna get that together for me, but she, I didn't get it.
But if we got sixty thousand outstanding fines, what, certainly was something we can do about that, isn't it?
Well, they have to, the property has to change hands before the fines are paid. So if they gonna, they can't do anything with their property until the fine, the liens are paid. So if they come in and they gotta, and some of these are properties that are, that there's, uh, no structure on. It's just vacant land, and, uh, there's a couple of them over in the Miranda Homes area where they had large bonds on them from.
Had large what? Bonds?
Couple, uh, I know, uh, there's one lady that bought three properties over there that had each, each property, single lots had about forty thousand dollars worth of bonds on it. And so she's not able to do anything, and she's also got liens against those properties. So she can't sell it. I mean, she just.
But, but why did we issue citations on?
That's the only way I can get it mowed.
Uh, well, oh, they're cleared lots.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Uh, no, I was just kinda wondering where we are with that. Good.
Public comments? Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Bob? Bob H. Oh, sorry.
Good morning, Commissioner, Supervisors and Board. We had quite an active month in security, you know, due with that hailstorm. There was numerous and numerous and numerous of signs that we also picked up for Bob and dealing with scammers and people going door to door trying to sell their wares. It was, um, numerous, numerous, numerous calls, especially right, right in there after the third day of the storm. They just like came here from all over everywhere, looking to victimize our citizens. A lot of them were. But the Sheriff's Department organized a, uh, scam unit, and then they came in and that reduced most of it. And along, we assisted them with some of the names of some of the people, and we were taking license plates down and reporting it to them, and then they would verify whether they were actually legal people or not.
I have a couple. Any questions for Bob? I'm just curious about, this one, I, I, I just, on, uh, number one ninety-one on your list.
I got that too.
It says vehicles spinning in circles in parking lot. I'm just, I had a tough time visualizing that.
I was called by someone in the restaurant where somebody was, our call, I mean, our security was called in the evening. Somebody was what we used to call spinning pennies?
Donuts.
Donuts, yeah. Spinning donuts in the parking lot of the golf course.
Oh, and this is on the golf course?
No, no, not on the golf course, in the golf course parking lot.
With a car?
Yes. It was a, it was a purple Dodge Charger, I believe.
So they got called.
You're too old to understand that.
Just out of curiosity, was he doing it when we got there?
Um, we got there the same time the police got there and they were, had already vacated. But.
But they still get a call, so they have to go to.
What's that?
Was the, the driver there when the cops got there?
No, no, they were gone when we arrived. They just spun around a couple times and left, and then when the bar called us, we'd drive there and they're already gone.
And we've had trouble actually hearing recognition in the past. The same thing, remember the guy?
Yeah, in the community center. We were having issues in the community center parking lot here.
And that's.
Let me ask you this, cause one, a little bit further down, number two fifty-one, renters failed to clean building after use at the community center?
That's here at the community center. We, we log that to support Kelly's, um, in case they have to bill the person or something like that. When we come and they don't clean up and they're required to make a cleanup and clean the floors, dump the trash, and we do a final inspection for them. If that final inspection fails, we list that as one of our, as a call so that that will support Kelly.
Did they lose, do we know if they lost their deposit?
We don't, that's not our department. That's Kelly.
Did they lose their deposit on that one?
That was that prom group that was here.
So there, there, the way that the deposits are run is they, there's a form that we have that we give to security that's checked off. I wanna say there are ten, roughly ten items, and the way we do it to make it fair, so that if someone, if and when people come back irritated that they lost some of their deposit, is there is a value assigned to each of them. So whatever your deposit is, divided by ten. Um, with that particular group, anything that they, um, anything that they didn't do, things that were left wrong per our standard checklist, yes, they were deducted that amount. We also reached out to, um, the principal at that high school, and I was copied on the email. Kelly very politely, but sternly let her know that the way that this building was left was completely unacceptable and unfair for our staff to have to take care of, and that moving forward, we would have to pretty well reevaluate whether or not we were gonna allow these types of activities if this is the way that, you know, our, our facility was gonna be left. Um, the principal was, to the best of my knowledge, it seemed like very much unaware of that situation, and I believe that that principal got it handled.
Okay, good. But did we get reimbursed? Any, did they in fact have a, a damaged deposit?
They did have a deposit. They had a deposit and they had deductions from that deposit based on whatever the guidelines were that they did not meet.
So they paid it?
Yeah, yeah, they paid to use the facility. Yeah, they, they paid, and, and I'd have to go back. I don't have the contract on me to know if they paid full amount, or if it was just a deposit or whatever it was, but there was a deduction based on the way the building was left.
Okay. Uh, number two eighty-two, again, apparently.
We're so politically correct.
Um, no, no, that's, sometimes when the golf course people go out later on in the afternoon, uh, as dark is approaching, the, the person in charge of the clubhouse will call us, and I was working that afternoon. He called me and said, hey, we got a golf cart that's still not out there. And I knew, I knew exactly where it was because it was problems we'd had earlier. So, um, I went one way of the course, and the guy from the, um, golf course went the other way, and we didn't pass him. He had crossed over from Deer Run over to Turtle, so we were looking on deer. But by the time we had returned, they had dropped the cart off and vacated. So the cart was there at the end when we got back.
So we knew who it was?
Yes, we knew who it was.
And they, we'd know that the golf people know who it was?
Yes.
I assume they'll take proper action.
Yes.
I, I got this other one now. On two eighty-six, there were threats made, subject made, making threats towards workers?
Um.
That's not a good thing.
No, that's an individual over on Manor Drive that, that we've had several issues with. He obviously has problems. Um, the screen guys were parked out, you know, because they can't pull on the grass. They were parked on the road screening the house next door to him. When our water department guy pulled up just briefly enough to walk out and check the hydrant as they do, he was, he wasn't there more than thirty seconds. The guy came running out of his house, making all kinds of accusations and threats. Um, I've dealt with him several times. Couple times I've just had to tell him, look, go back in your house. I'm not gonna talk to you anymore. And he's very, he agitates very easily.
I know, he's my old neighbor.
Oh, you know him?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, he agitates very easily. And, and it's not, it, the, it's the son. The, there's the older, the older man and the wife live there, and it's their son, and he's obviously had some issues, but.
I mean, could we do anything about that?
Yes, we reported. The sheriff did report. The sheriff did come and take a report, yes.
Good.
I, I have to, quick. Why do we go out and help lost dogs?
Why do we? Why wouldn't we?
Why wouldn't we?
Well, I, why don't the, aren't the people doing that?
Yeah, they usually call us when, when a dog gets loose or something like that. They usually call us after they've looked for a while and saying, hey, because they know we're out and about. And they say, hey, look, if you see my dog, this is what he looks like. This is his name.
Okay, I understand that.
And then we hook up with them, and a lot of the, I probably know more dogs in this district than I know people.
Bob, is it, it was my impression after our discussion that you said that fifty percent or more of those calls are the same people that keep calling you to find their dog when they let their dog out and it doesn't come back?
That does happen very commonly here, when they, they irresponsibly let their dog out without a leash, and then, and then they know they can become issue to animal control if, so they'll call us and say, hey, have you seen my dog? That does happen.
Okay, good report. Any other questions, Bob? Any public comments?
Nope.
Thank you, sir. Uh, utility report.
Joey.
Turn it on. Good morning, Joseph Sliva, Supervisor of Utilities. During the month of April, we had eight new connections made for water and wastewater. Um, an update on the distribution auto flushers. Um, working with Drew Jones from Polston, uh, we've come across a hydraulic model that helps know which way the water's flowing through the distribution system. With that, we, uh, used it in placing the first four auto flushers, um, which have not been put in yet, but we have started moving forward with the purchasing of the required material to get them installed. Uh, Chris and I met with the Maintenance Department Head of Advent Health about the location on their, um, property. I have to get with the contractor now and see what they think is gonna be best as far as runoff and just some other various things that are gonna come with the flowing water. Um, I've also met with, uh, Tanglewood on the two proposed locations. Um, we're doing some, uh, surveying still in Tanglewood. We're gonna figure out what's the best to meet the needs out there, but also not to cause any disruptions in anybody's yard, so on and so forth. Uh, so that is in the works. Um, the Tanglewood master meter has not been put in yet, even though it was supposed to be put in this week. Um, they're still waiting on the bolt and gasket kits, which, uh, at this point, I've ordered multiple to have on the shelf, so it shouldn't be an issue next time. Um, the employees, we did hire one utility technician. Uh, we've done a couple more, uh, made a couple more calls. Uh, some people didn't show up. Some people click, hang up on the, hang up on you as soon as you tell them who you are. Um, but luckily we were able to hire one. Um, it's not on the staff report, but as far as, oh, sorry, uh, as far as a, um, operator position goes for water and wastewater, we haven't had any bites yet on Indeed, but, uh, in hindsight, we do have two of our current employees, one scheduled for the thirteenth of June and one scheduled for the twenty-eighth of June to go take their wastewater test. So hopefully they'll pass. I believe they will.
Joey, I'm curious, why do people hang up on you, do you think?
I think a lot of it has to do with benefits that are people receiving and just applying for, for a job to say they're doing it, and then you call back, and they realize who you are, and then they hang up because that doesn't help their benefits to accept the job.
Oh, so they're looking for benefits we don't offer?
Well, no, the benefits, uh, through the government, government benefits, yes. Yeah.
It's when you're laid off, you have to, you have to tell unemployment how many jobs you applied for. How would I know that?
But yeah, I've, I've, surprisingly, I've had people at this point hang up on me, and then this morning I had one text me and asked me, A, is that job still available? But I'm like, well, two weeks ago you hung up on me, so it's still available, but you can go ahead and apply.
Right.
And they're asking negotiation on price. And I said, well, let's get through your interview first. So.
All right, thank you.
Um, I guess the main one for this past month, um, about midnight on Sunday, I think it was the thirtieth or thirty-first of this past month, uh, we had a water break on Florida Avenue again. Uh, the pipe split from the last repair. It's thin wall, scheduled forty. Uh, it's not used no, any longer in water distribution. Um, little, uh, background though, normal average flow for that time of the night is between two fifty and four hundred gallons per minute. Um, we were pushing about an average of two thousand gallons a minute for about an hour, um, until we were able, me and the technician were able to shut the valves off, uh, about two. were able to shut the valves off, uh, about two o'clock at that point. We didn't have what we needed to repair it, so we left that strip of this, uh, area off, uh, in that line, in that distribution area. About six o'clock in the morning, I was able to get ahold of KDL and get things moving on a repair. They were out here promptly, uh, they did have it fixed relatively quick, uh, we were able to start pulling samples by three o'clock, so getting the water moving. They, um, we, I think it, it needs to be reevaluated in the area of the main line. It's the third split in about three months, I've talked with Chris and Drew, and something that we're going to work on, seeing what options we have to eliminate these issues, um, seems like it's going to keep happening.
Chris, this is what we spoke about, right? So are we, what is the next step in trying to fix a potential problem?
We're going to see what's in the area, uh, most likely it's going to be a replacement of the main line to move up to the C nine hundred piping, which is roughly about a half inch thick versus a quarter inch, so.
And how many twenty feet do we need to replace, about?
I think we've, um, bear with me, I think around a thousand feet of pipe. It, there's a spot there, half of the main line is eight inches now, and then it has a reducer and goes into six. We've talked about just bumping it all the way up to eight, just for future demand. And then it's easier to have common-sized parts on one line versus reducers, and so on and so forth.
So when do you think you'll have a solution or a proposal?
I would have to get back to you on that, I, I truly would not know without talking with engineers and first. So I mean, it's in the process, it needs to be done, um, it's on the to-do list, so.
But do we, do we have any idea ballpark how much that might cost us? Ballpark?
Thousand feet of pipe, um, moving up to that, it would have to be fifty dollars a foot, I would think.
We're, we're estimating about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, that's, that's the reason for the holdup.
A hundred and twenty thousand to put it in?
You've had three breaks, it costs us, what, twenty thousand dollars apiece?
Roughly, yes.
Well.
This has got to be done, it's got to be done, so.
The, the only reason I'm trying to push it a little bit is if it's something that really needs to be done, it sounds like it's a capital project. And perhaps we should have anticipated it in the next capital budget meeting, that we may need those resources. I mean, if we got to do it, we got to do it.
Any kind of funding available for that type of thing?
No, no, it's, it's just regular operation and maintenance, and it's old-school pipe, it's too small, and one, once it starts splitting, and it was, it was the twenty thousand dollar question, you got a team out there at two in the morning, you have water interruption. I, I will add to that report just briefly, you know, when we met with the hospital folks, and it's not unusual because it's come up in surveys across the nation in confidence in water systems. Last few years, first year it started diving, and the people at Advent have some concerns about our reliability and quality. Simply because of historical, and Joey and I were there talking to them, historical, uh, boil water notices and some issues, and I told them at that point, I said, well, we're getting ready to put a flusher on your system, we're going to put one on the interconnect with Avon Park, we're going to put a generator up there, so if the power goes off, that valve will function by itself, and we're working with them on a backflow preventer. But it's, you hate to have your largest customer kind of look at you and question what you're doing, and they have forces above them, you know, like the hospital accreditation board, they're doing Legionnaires' disease surveys right now, so it's a touchy subject.
So you, you satisfied them with your answers at this point?
They, they were real happy when we told them the actions we were taking, and that's why we're working with them, and we're going to them. And some of these things involve what's happening on their property, but we can help them solve some of those issues.
Very good, thank you.
Anything else, Joey?
Uh, just to, uh, kind of second some of the, like, the Tanglewood master meter, the parts that were missing, uh, the break that night, there was a couple parts that are missing, I have started ordering with that, uh, the money that was given to us, approved by you, by you all for the spare parts inventory, I have started purchasing parts, so. They're coming in, backorder's backorder, but things are going to start hitting the shelves, so.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Public comments? Thank you, sir. Counsel or general manager? Counsel first.
Yep, okay, um, I had a, a meeting with Cliff Rhodes yesterday, uh, went over the Avanti matter, uh, there's, like I said, the current status of that is we have filed our, our complaint's been filed, a, by our, the, the previous attorney that was, that's deceased. The, a motion to dismiss was, was filed by the, by opposing counsel, um, and Mr. Rhodes had started on do, doing an amended complaint, but after reviewing, and during his preparation of the amended complaint, he's determined that it's probably in the best interest of the district to have an actual hearing on the motion to dismiss, so we can flush out, you know, any potential issues that opposing counsel has, and so that is, he's in the process of scheduling that hearing, once that hearing is held, we'll have, you know, he's going to be able to quantify and, I guess, focus in on the, the issues that are, or relate to the thing, relate to the, the suit. The, it's indisputable that we have a, uh, that we're covered by the warranty, because the, they say we have a ten-year, a ten-year full warranty on encoder registry and the MTU radio mod, modules, but it's actually, we have a full, it's a twenty-year warranty because the first ten years are full and the second ten years are prorated. So basically what we're trying to do is focus in on why they're trying to get it dismissed, they're, they're claiming that there's only a one-year warranty, and it's, you know, it's, it's ludicrous, because a one-year warranty is what's listed in the actual contract, but the supporting documents that are, become a part of the contract, the RFP calls for those extended warranties, and those warranties are in existence. So, anyway, that, that process is moving forward, but slowly. The Auckland matter, uh, the, when it was originally filed, Auckland is the bondholder, and of the, and they are trying to wipe out the, the Fifth Third Bank issue, you know, the, the subservient bondholder, or some, I call them bondholders, it's not really a bondholder. So, for some reason, they dropped Fifth Third as a defendant, and we don't, my discussion with Mr. Rhodes is that's not possible. They are, they are what's, what's called a indispensable party, they have to be a party to the lawsuit. And I'm sure you all received a copy on the, of the, uh, commercial loan pass due notice to the platoon of three-point-three million dollars. Do you guys get a copy of that?
I don't know if they got it. Chris, did we send it out to them?
Yes, I think that was mailed to everybody, it was.
Yeah, so anyway, that came in around May eleventh, um, my discussion was with Mr. Rhodes, and when I'm going to, I talked with Chris, what we're going to try to find out is how often we remit payments to Fifth Third. Because now that this notice has come in claiming that we're delinquent, if we provide them additional funds, we may be locking ourselves into this number, and we definitely don't want to do that, so.
I thought our order has told us that this was a dead issue, and it was dropped off the books, and we were clear. Correct?
Well, as far as the, as far as the, the, what we have to borrow against her, if it's, yeah.
It's not being held against us.
As far as the accounting goes, but it's still a, you know, a potential issue, and now that they have issued this, this past due notice, what we don't want to do is provide them additional funds that say, you know, you're correct, or, or we're not, we, we need to dispute this, basically is what's going to happen. And so, what, we have already filed a response with affirmative defenses stating that Fifth Third is an indispensable party, and so we're moving forward with that process to get it, basically, we're going to try and consolidate it all into the Auckland, the currently existing Auckland matter, so that we can resolve all the issues at once. Because the Auckland matter technically only involves about thirty properties, but the Fifth Third involves a lot more properties, so we're trying to consolidate and get that all taken care of at one time. So, that's where we're at with that. I'm in the, I'm in the process of developing a, a revised contract for my services, so that I can kind of assist in the budget, budgeting process. My rates are going to go up a little bit, um, but I'm kind of trying to offset that with some additional proposed duties that I would take on, but I'm working with Chris with that, and we'll probably have that in the next, you know, budget meeting or two. Other than that, the only, the one other thing I wanted to remind, there's been some, I guess, some discussion in the past, or the past few weeks, but I need to go back to the, the, there's the requirement for supervisors, supervisors are not supposed to individually direct any district staff. All direction has to come, the, it's Board Policy B dash one-one-zero-eight about not directing district staff. If there's any questions about how district staff is performing, that needs to go to Chris, not to individual staff members, just a reminder. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I have a question on that, when I meet with.
In the microphone.
What? When I meet with, like, I've been meeting with, uh, Ari, Ray asked me to meet with, uh, Bob and Bob and Joey and stuff the last couple of days, uh, so what can I say, what can I say?
You can, you can ask for information or, or recommendations, but you can't individually direct them to say, take this course of action. You just get information.
I haven't, but I just wanted to know, okay, but it's legal for me to meet with them?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, information and, and recommendations for those purposes, but you don't issue any directives to any board staff. Anything that you want, based on that information that you receive, if you want some action to be taken, you can bring it up to Chris, and then Chris puts it on the agenda, and he gets brought to the board.
And, and I think if that's going on, you should let the board know. You know, because I, I don't know what a direction is sometimes, but there's a lot of it going on. But if, if the, any supervisors are doing that, we should know, and we should just, I think this is probably a nice way of you trying to get somebody to quit, but, to quit doing it.
Just a reminder, just a reminder, so I mean, it's, I'm not, I'm not making any accusations or anything to say, just a reminder, because there's some stuff that's happened in the past that may be considered this, just to reiterate, you know, that's the board policy, and please be aware of it.
And we can't discuss anything that might come up for, but, correct?
Correct, with any other supervisors, correct. But you can discuss that with, when you, because all of you guys meet individually with Chris, that's, you can discuss anything you want to with him, and it's on Chris to make sure that he doesn't allow cross-contamination. For lack of a better term.
But, but sometimes we need help on what direction really is, you know, like I asked just to meet with Ariel, and for some reason, that was direction, and that's not direction, that's meeting with her and, and seeing what was going to go on. I mean, that's not, that's not direction.
Correct, advice and information, and you're allowed to get it anytime.
That's right, okay.
Any other questions? Any public comments? General Manager's report.
Sure, I, I, one thing I didn't have on there, and we're still struggling, uh, working with the kitchen AC, we had one contractor that was putting together a final bid, and he needed some road information, and that's been going on for two weeks since he's told me he was going to come back with the final number. So, trying to get bids, trying to get quotes for anything, um, even with the pickleball, took us almost two months to get the quotes that we have right now in place.
I, I need a clarification on, on how we're doing things these days. I thought that when we agree to what I think is an RFP saying spend fifty-five thousand on the air conditioning unit or what have you, that's like us signing off on it, it's, all the work's been done, and now it's just a question of executing. Is that not the way we go anymore?
He's got to get, he's got to get bids for the, for the.
To do an RFP, you have to come to us with bids and say, this is who I want to do, this is what I want to do, and this is how much it's going to cost us. And then if we vote on it, we're just finalizing the package, and it should be implemented, is that not correct?
Yeah, not entirely, so if, if there, so the, the threshold for an RFP, if I'm remembering correctly, is fifty thousand dollars? If it's est, if the, if the project is estimated to be fifty thousand dollars or more, an RFP has to be issued. And then once that RFP is issued, you, the bids come in, and then we bring the bids to the board for approval, I, I said, to, to, you know, with a recommendation.
And if it's not fifty thousand, what's the process?
If it's under fifty thousand, then it's three, three bids.
Yes, so back in July, um, when the board adopted some, there were some policy revisions that Omar had presented. One of the things that we talked through at the board meeting was the purchasing policy, and the updates that we made to that, we made updates with regards to the term in which we could do a piggyback contract, and then the thresholds, because it hadn't been updated in so long, and the thresholds that were currently there were so low, it was holding up business basically from being done. So, it, I pulled the minutes, um, just in case this question came up. It says on there that it was from July, I believe it's the twenty-seventh, it says a Tuesday, I don't remember meeting on a Tuesday, but that was a year ago, so that's, that's what the board minutes say, that's where you can find it, if you're, if you're interested in seeing that particular policy. The way that it reads is that under fifty thousand, let's see. Estimated to cost in excess of twenty-five thousand must be approved by the Board of Supervisors by resolution. At minimum, three quotes will be provided to substantiate the recommendation. Valid piggyback agreements can forego the quote requirements. So anything that goes twenty-five thousand dollars, basically between that twenty-five thousand and fifty thousand, we clearly have to come and get board approval for that project, but it requires three quotes, not an RFP. Anything over fifty thousand, clearly we have to get board approval for as well, but that, that constitutes us having to put it out for public bid with an RFP.
But didn't we not approve fifty thousand to be spent to repair that air conditioner?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, you, you approved that, but we, we were getting bids from the contractors, and they were all looking to be that way, under fifty thousand, it's still going to be under fifty thousand, and I don't have the final number to be able to give the guy a contract and sign it to get to work.
Oh.
And, and even that three bid becomes a problem, because Marmar walked away, our prime contractor, Aaron Electric, said, we do this much of it, but we aren't going to do two other pieces of it, but we really aren't interested at this time because we're too busy. So we do have a solid third.
I'm not arguing on the end result, but I'm arguing, what I'm confused about is how we get there. I understand that you have to get the bids, but I don't understand, I mean, you asked for the money, we gave you the money, and then you went out to sauce it, who's going to do it?
Well, we already started getting quotes at that time, and we asked.
Why wouldn't, I guess, why?
We approved up to fifty thousand.
We approved up to fifty, but then don't we have, oh, so when you figure out who it is, are we going to have to go through this process again, or is it done?
No, you've approved up to fifty thousand, if it's under fifty, I'd sign it and get them working.
I think what Chris was doing, he, he was trying to give us information, what was going on, right?
Trying to get it moving too, and I knew we could do it under fifty.
Trying to get it moving, it wasn't like, no, he's trying to get it done because there was complaints about the kitchen. Yeah. Right.
So board approval is not the holdup, the holdup is getting the number, if I'm understanding correctly.
Right, but shouldn't the, shouldn't the way it work, should work, and, correct me if I, I'm probably wrong on this, is they do the homework, they get the bids, they come to the board and say, it's going to cost, this is what we, we're recommending, this guy, it's going to cost fifty thousand dollars, can we have your blessing? And then the board decides, right?
Yeah, in a perfect world, but basically, like I said, this is a, yeah, well, this, like I said, this is an emergent situation where we know we have this issue, so we know it's going to cost, or it's estimated to cost less than fifty, so we're coming to you now, as the saying, to, you know, give us the ability to approve this project, assuming it comes in under fifty thousand dollars, we're going to get our three bids, we're going to take the lowest of those three bids, or, or we're going to make a recommendation, or determination as to who should do it, you've already approved it, as long as it's less than the fifty, but they still have to go through the three bid process, if that makes sense.
Right, makes sense.
And he's just having a hard time getting three bids.
And we, we had, had the, the objective with everything included, we assumed was going to be right around forty-two thousand, forty-five, put in a contingency, and we're still at that number, but getting the final number where I can sign it and make the work happen's been the problem.
The holdup's not you guys, it's the contractor. Right, you've done everything you need to do. The problem's the contractor's got to get, two more contractors get prices to help him finish the job, and he's having trouble getting people to come to work.
And an RFP is a, a very formal process, over fifty thousand, where it's advertised in the newspaper, you know, with its specifications and sixty-day process.
I don't know why we have always have obstacles in trying to get things done, maybe that's where I'm confused. We signed up on this fifty thousand dollars a month ago, and we're still at first base. I, I, I guess I'm just frustrated that the process seems to be taking a very long period of time, and there's always a reason why.
Well, right, when we, uh, came forward, we, we were trying to get out in front of it and get the board approval. Well, right when we came forward, we, we were trying to get out in front of it and get the board approval so we could solicit it and get approval and tell people, hey, we have the money. Let's go get the quotes. And we had solid numbers and our number is still solid. Getting someone to do the work's a different story.
So have we awarded the contract?
No. We can't get a final number. That's, that's where we go. There's a final, we can't, we can't sign a contract or, or approve it or pro, uh, Chris can't approve a proposal until we have a final number.
A final contract. That's all we got to do.
And it took us two months to get a septic tank company to come out and replace a drain field for nine thousand dollars.
I mean.
As far as this three bid rule, as long as we make a good faith effort, such as on the.
Like we, what we just did with the, with the, with the resurfacing.
Right.
So if we have, if we have an issue getting the, that third bid, we just come to you guys and say, look, here's the problem. And you guys have the ability to suspend that policy.
Okay. I guess you answered that. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll just bring up briefly too, uh, I had a, we did the facility risk management reports. Spend a little over twenty thousand dollars addressing all these issues. The shop in the back, the staff worked really hard. It looks really good back there. We have all the flammables and the proper containers. The buildings have been cleaned up. Couple outstanding thing is we still have this array of antennas that's up behind the office. It was in the report. Those were from old handheld radios that they used for security back in the days and also that failed meter system. Right now they're just hurricane bait. Um, I'm going to try to find a contractor that'll take them down for the scrap value of the metal.
Send Joey up there, he can do it.
Sure. Um, that would be an OSHA. And also another thing that was outstanding is that said hydraulic lift should undergo an annual inspection and maintenance process. Well, we had them inspected and they failed. So they're being repaired now, but we didn't know they failed because they weren't inspected in yearly when they were supposed to be done, but we're working on that too. And, uh, we have one minor issue with the playground. We've taken care of that with the, uh, mulch and the trips and slips and falls and the sharp objects out there, but, uh, it took some money. But we're reducing that exposure and liability and also gave you a copy that just came in from John's Eastern on all the claims we've had. Joey, you'll be glad to know utilities is number one. Uh, on the injuries, but that's what we're trying to do is reduce all those numbers across the board. And to say staff did a great job back there because if you go back and look around that shop now compared to three or four months ago, the vehicles were getting them lettered, fire extinguishers in them, uh, safety equipment that we needed. It's, it's come a long way.
What else?
And facilities plan, the big dollars for stormwater and the wastewater. Post engineering did finish the stormwater portion. We're waiting on the wastewater and, uh, we'll bring those up for discussion at the June third meeting and at that time ask to set a public hearing on the seventeenth. So the board can consider and, and approve those two plans and then we submit them to the F D E P for consideration for their August S R F funding meeting. And at that August meeting, they're basically approving the project, giving you the terms, um, for that loan. And, uh, then you move forward there, getting an agreement from them. And as of a couple of days ago, the interest rates for the wastewater loans was point zero two percent. And on the water side, if you need that, one point seven four percent. So they're still way below market. And the federal government just put another one point nine billion dollars into that S R F fund across the country. The state revolving loan fund basically is federal funding. The state adds a little bit to it, but it's repaid by the loans that they give. So it's supposed to be self sustaining. And, uh, I'd like to ask Drew, be, stand up because those facility plans will use those and basically take the same information and put them into the templates that the state wants for their House Bill fifty three requirements and get that requirement satisfied. A lot of people are hiring consultants just to do that. And I also wanted to ask Drew just to talk on basic inspections for a moment on the stormwater side.
Okay. Um, we recently, we recently did the eastern basin pond inspection, which is required by swift mud. That's one of the, it's pretty much from the maintenance facility, Columbus area, all of Turtle north. So that whole quadrant of Sun and Lake is called the eastern basin. And it's pretty much all the ponds that are in and around in Turtle Run Golf Course, that are at least part of the treatment system. There's a handful that aren't in the actual stormwater system, but the majority of them are. Um, and we have to look at them and check and make sure they're still following the swift mud permit, make sure the structures are clean. Ponds are, the berms are functioning as they're intended and no one's removed them or broken anything or anything's failing. I did have, I did have a few things to note in our, in our report that I submitted to Chris. I'm going to work with, uh, Bob on getting a map marked up so the, the maintenance guys can come in and fix some of it, but, I did notice, and I haven't noticed it in the past, like ten years, looking at the previous reports too. Uh, we've had a lot of pond berms washing out around the golf course. I don't know if that's just because we're in a drought condition this year. In the past year, we were a little drier than normal, but I'm sure y'all have probably seen them. If you've been out there, they put a lot of rip rap. The golf, I think this is a golf course, uh, they've been managing it and trying to stay ahead of it, but I know they've been putting big rip rap on a lot of the troubled locations. But there's still quite a few locations that are washing out, but I don't, I don't know the exact cause of that. I don't know if it's because they're trying to maintain them with a nice white sand on the, the berms. I know that's not good for erosion overall, but, um, they've been that way for a while. From what I understand, it's just they're, they're starting to wash out more than normal. That's something that we need to make sure we address just because it's bad for the golf course and it's swift mud. Isn't going to like that if we're having erosion problems.
Have you talked to Jimmy about that?
Uh, not yet. I, I just got the report done yesterday.
Okay.
We'll, we'll make sure we address it and we might, that might be something where we might need to add a few more dollars in funds to help them make sure that's not a continuing problem. I don't know if we need, I, I know they talked about asking for money for rip rap and other locations to y'all. The rip rap, the rocks that they're putting on the banks. I just thought it was one pond. I didn't realize they've been putting it in quite a few of them. I'm sure it's to help address the erosion, but, we either need to do that or allow vegetation probably to grow back in on the slopes, but I know that's probably not desirable from a, uh, visual or aesthetic standpoint. That's just a maintenance concern. Um, that's not a, not detrimental, but we did have, um, behind, um, is it Turner Furniture, the big ponds over there on the north end. The skimmers have been stolen, um, because they're made out of aluminum. The skimmers, they're the aluminum or metal fixtures that are on the concrete boxes. I'm assuming someone took it because I don't think anyone would have, it wasn't there anymore. It didn't just break off or fall off. I think we put new ones up and new structures in two thousand sixteen and seventeen. So I, I'm assuming since it's out in the middle of nowhere, people just decided they wanted the aluminum for scrap, but, um, that's something we'll have to replace. Uh, but a lot, the rest of it's mostly maintenance vegetation removal. It's not, nothing detrimental, but that is part of the, the H B fifty three, the house bill that we'll have to do a twenty year plan. Stuff like that can be rolled into it for continual maintenance because we're having to, we have to show a lot of that showing financials from what I, when I read, there's an Excel sheet and we have to figure out what we're doing and how much all of it's going to cost for twenty years. So that can be mowing ditches, that can be trimming around the ponds, just regular maintenance, but it's also everything else that we do. Like if the skimmers fall off or get stolen, we have to put line items in that, but, um, to tie that back into our S R F, that's, we were working mainly on the, the western basin, um, for the S R F funding. But it's anything culverts crossing the road, they're potentially going to fail, anything like that, we got to roll into that twenty year plan.
You talking about that plan that we have?
Yep. That's the, the facilities plan are generated to get the money from the D E P. They require it to demonstrate the need and three options. The House Bill fifty three is the governor putting the squeeze on special districts and local governments saying, what do you need to get done in the next twenty years? How much money do you have and what's your funding gap? And by the way, how are you going to solve that funding gap to address these needs?
Right. Which we already, we're doing that.
Yep. Yeah. And we, we're going to, those plans go to the county, um, in June.
Are you telling me that you think we're going to need more than that number that I have already?
The, you talking about the four and a half to five million?
No, I'm talking about the six million that you gave me.
Over, over a twenty year period, yes.
Well, of course, I'm talking about the catch up and fix what we need to fix based on our conversations.
That's a, that's a very open ended question. There's, we have to consider what we're going to be spending every year. Do we want to, that's where, do you want to try to take a cra, I don't, I don't want to overextend the district with stuff. That's, we originally provided a, it was over ten million dollars. And we've cut it back twice from that. So I'm not saying that, I'm not saying the five million isn't going to make a substantial impact. It is, it's going to address a lot of the neglected things towards the west. But there are, there are smaller items. It's not, they're not like millions of dollars like each item. We don't have major structures on this end of the district failing. We've, we've repaired and replaced and maintained a lot of that, but there are.
What do you need? Do you need a number? If I told you that we're going to consider, this is just me, consider spending six million dollars to play catch up and give you three hundred thousand a year for sewer and drainage, does that suffice for what you guys are looking for?
That's what we're looking at right now, getting those final numbers.
Well, you better keep it at three hundred thousand and six million. Don't you think that's a bit much?
Yeah.
Well, that, that's, that's why we don't, we've got to take in consideration, okay, we're going to, if we're going to continue our two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand a year for drainage maintenance, we don't necessarily need to roll every little thing that we might ever do on this end of the district or anything that may fail. We don't want to put that in alone and try to, it, it's like repairing something that's not broken yet. We don't want to try to do something like that. But if it's a bunch of smaller projects that we're going to cover as our yearly, yearly work goes on, that, that's, that's up to y'all to decide if it ultimately.
We're going to go with that reply next, uh, June third, right? I assume that everything's listed there. It's something we need to do. Otherwise, why would you put it in the report?
Everything in that report is every, is something we need to do. That's everything that's damaged from pretty much Cortez. There's a few items within the area here, but pretty much Cortez West are the major items. That's what I was directed to do originally when we were asking for the, when the fund opportunities came available.
Well, I, I would go under the assumption that the board might, will, will consider this and hopefully will approve it, do whatever. And then come up with a number for every year that suffices what he needs to do for this report.
Right.
And I assume it'll be close to what we are working, I hope.
And the, uh, the S R F loan for the, that is really a backlog of neglected infrastructure where your continual year in, year out, you can still use that. Um, but you're, but it's not like total replacement like S R F or your engineering design. You're still doing your repair and maintenance every year.
That's correct.
This is to cover the backlog of stuff that's out there and is disintegrated, needs to be rebuilt.
Now we haven't done.
Right.
And by, and by permit, we're required to do, because it's not just Drew and myself looking over your shoulder. You have the water management district looking at reports and, and now state government.
You better get your numbers right.
Right. And the problem is, is we keep putting stuff off, keep putting stuff off, keep putting stuff off. And now look where we are today again.
Five million dollars.
Five million dollars. And we keep putting it off and we've been saying that for ten years.
The million, the report says six.
Well, whatever it is.
Well, I think it's, well, it depends on which items you're adding because there's administration and stuff.
We'll talk about it, but you have some good numbers. I mean, assuming that that's what we're going to consider on June third.
Correct. Correct.
Then you guys got to tell us if you can live with that two seventy five or three hundred thousand that we give you every year to make whatever you have to do for the county or the state.
That's what, that's what we're going to develop as part of the, that state, the House Bill thing. We're going to develop how much we need. And it's as inflation and everything grows, we're going to, as the years go on, we're going to probably need to bump that up. That's, that's part of that whole thing. That's why we're doing that. That's why the state's requiring it. So we know, okay, if we want to maintain our level of service, we got to add twenty five grand a year, whatever it is that we're going to come up with to help. It's just inflation.
Say twenty five hundred a year?
If we needed.
Money doesn't grow on trees. Just keep that in mind.
Correct. But I'm, that's where you say. That's where you got to come up with your level of service that you're.
We have to, we have to get, we have to stop saying no, 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 and fixing things wrong.
He's going to, he's asking us to spend six million dollars. Is that a no? You think that's a no?
Give it to him.
It's our decision.
Okay. I mean.
Next.
Um, we did, we also got a, a letter from a resident, uh, concerning the gas tax and we're going to, uh, meet with them at a later date and talk to them about it.
Yeah, I've talked, just so you know, I talked this to Halbig. We've decided not to have his meeting, his letter read into this meeting and have no conversation on it. And I will meet with him, David and Chris separately in the next couple of weeks and, uh, have a conversation with him. If he needs to then come to the board, we'll bring it to the board.
Okay.
But to revisit it.
As the board, we have already said that we were going.
That's right. I don't know why we have to revisit.
That's what we're going to do.
And, uh, I'll also.
Craig, what did you say? I'm sorry, as a board, we.
As a board, we determined that we were not going, we were no longer going to pursue anything from the county concerning the gas tax.
Okay.
That's correct.
I agree.
That is correct and I voted for it as well, but I'm going to have a meeting with him nonetheless, with these two gentlemen and see what he has to say. I could, I theoretically, I'm sparing you doing it here.
Yeah. Mister, Mister Halbig is free to come every meeting and talk during public comment about the gas taxes if he wants to. We can't do that. We can't stop him from doing that. So we're going to address it and try to avoid any further discussion regarding.
And several weeks ago, we had a discussion about some duplex housing and county approvals for zoning and housing product. Well, this last week we got in a proposal to put a seven hundred and fifty square foot modular on a lot that is not an HOA. And the guy said, well, I've got my approval from the county. So that's what you have now that's looking at you is lots that aren't in the HOAs. They're just undeveloped lots because there's owned R one and R three, seven hundred and fifty square foot minimum housing size. We just got application in for that and the county's approved it already.
And Chris, where is that?
I'll have to get the address for you. I.
I, I thought. I thought one time we.
We have gone to the county with our recommendations on the specs that we would have liked to have seen and we would have turned down.
Just, just to add to the, the home he was talking about, uh, Sunday forwarded me the, the plans. It's a shipping container home. It's, I'm not lying. There's, I think it's three wide to get to their seven hundred and fifty square feet. It's just.
Where is this going?
I don't have the address. I was just.
Where is it? Where is Ariel?
And actually, when he says that shipping, people have been getting very innovative by stacking those up and cutting windows. I mean, actually making some nice products out of it, but all I'm saying is I don't know if there's anything we can do about it. In an HOA, different story. Because they have some covenants and restrictions according to the HOA.
We are limited to what, what is, we don't have any additional requirements or, uh, specifications that differ from the county. If, 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 if the, if it's permitted under county zoning, we can't stop them.
Right. So out back, like beyond Cortez, they can do anything they want.
Depends, depends on what it's zoned, but if it's zoned, if it passes county zoning, there's nothing we can do to stop them.
Tiny houses.
Correct. And yeah, seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Yeah.
For R one, R two and R three. R one A is, R one A is the thousand square foot threshold.
Let me, let me say it one more time. The board changed to the recommendation, the board made a recommendation to the county on what specs we would like to see for the district. And the county said no. So that's it. If you would like to revisit it again, I guess we could, but I would assume we'll get the same answer.
I mean, we could go, but we can ask the county again, but they've already made a decision. So I don't know why they would make a different decision.
And we changed his own.
This was like.
We can't.
What was this, two years ago?
If, we cannot, because we don't own the property.
I think it's when, uh, Mark was on the board, Michael was on the board, I was on the board. And, uh, obviously Tanya was.
How do you get to R? How do you get to S R one A?
It's, it's already zoned that way. So I mean, every, every.
You said that's a thousand square foot.
Yeah. So there's, there's properties in the district. Some are zoned R one, some are zoned R one A, some are zoned R two and some are zoned R three. So I think we probably have, R three takes care of all the multi-use stuff. So I don't know if there's anything different than R, R one, R one, R one A, R two and R three. I think is everything that's in the district except for the commercial.
I think is everything that's in the district except for the commercial property.
So they're going to allow, we're going to allow to put a container.
The county is going to allow.
Well, whatever.
We cannot stop them. We did, let's say, we can't stop it.
We cannot change his own.
What?
We cannot, because we, if we don't, if the district does not own the property, we cannot change the zoning.
Does the county own the property?
I don't know who owns the property. Probably the individual property owners or the, whatever company is going to be putting in the small house.
I don't have an address.
And the county, all that zoning was done when they started with in 85 with comprehensive land use planning and assigning zoning categories. And they laid it out and then it's up to a property owner to come in there and say, oh, I want to rezone to multifamily or a higher density or a lesser density. Otherwise, that's, it is what it is. That hasn't changed in years, that zoning. I just thought I'd let you know, Mike.
You have any other good news, Chris? Otherwise, I'm going to cut you off.
Cut me off.
Move on. Any, any questions for?
I, I don't even like saying this out.
You might as well.
Save it for the golf club.
No, it's, I will talk to Mr. Schumacher. Jesus.
Okay, let's go on to, uh.
And that, that's just the permit report that's in the book, the number of permits that we've issued month by month and what they're for. And as you see, the numbers are going up.
Well, they'll be going down if you start letting.
Yeah, well, maybe. Yep. Um, and of course, the general election flyer and all the posting information's up too. And that's even out on the electronic billboard on 27.
That, that general election flyer.
Can we establish a wall-to-wall HOA?
No.
No.
We cannot affect property we don't own.
No, we can't. We, we, we tried, Greg, and they won't let us. Certainly. I wish we could, but.
Uh, can we take that general election flyer and put it in the newspaper?
Like general circulation newspaper?
Yeah, the Highlands, whatever we've got, in the newspaper.
There, I mean, we posted an ad, didn't we? Yeah, we posted an advertisement. Maybe not the exact same thing as that flyer.
Posted that little thing that nobody reads. I'm talking about this flyer that we have. Could we put that in the newspaper?
Sure, for about, uh, $1,800, we could do that.
I, uh, I, I think it's worthwhile.
General election announcement.
Why do you think it's worth flying?
Huh? Because I don't think anybody knows who's running that this is going on.
Well, and how many people do you think read the newspaper in Son and Lake?
I'm sorry?
How many people do you think read the newspaper in Son and Lake? How many people do you think take the newspaper in Son and Lake?
I do.
I do.
I know.
I do, I do.
Four out of five here.
Yeah.
Four. I would just say it's an idea. If you guys don't think it's a good idea, fine.
I, I don't think it's a good idea, but, uh, just because it's $1,800 and I don't know if it's going to make any difference, but.
And it, it is in the newsletter and it's going to everybody in the district and it's posted in the restaurant golf club in the office. But if you'd like, I think that gets to that direction. Make a motion and tell us to do it and we'll be glad to.
Scratch that idea. Is there, uh, I guess on the website, you're taking over the website now? Is that going to be your, your baby or is that going to be, whose baby is that? Who's running the, who's going to be?
Are you referring to the new website?
Yeah.
Um, well, obviously that would fall within some organizational changes, but as Chris mentioned, um, that would, if Kelly was promoted into the position of Director of Community Services, that would be something that she would handle.
So Kelly's going to be.
Yes, obviously, once, once all of that kind of morphs in, we adopt or make whatever effective changes for an org chart, yes.
Well, she's in charge of the website. Correct me if I'm wrong. Doesn't she have to get contact with the people that we signed this agreement with to get this thing running?
Yeah, we're, we're already filling out the survey they asked us for and getting them the, uh, photography they asked for, yeah.
Yes, we're all collectively going to be meeting. Kelly is currently not the person that is in charge of a website. We are all collectively working to meet with them to make sure that it fits the needs of the departments that are most affected and need to be published on the website.
Okay, when do you think we can have an update on the website?
Great. We'll bring it to you at the next, well, second meeting, 17th.
Okay, 17th is fine. I believe that covers the general manager. Any new business?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah?
Why do we have to have meetings every, why do we have to have meeting on a Friday? Why can't we move meetings to a, a Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday instead of going Fri- every Fridays? I mean, I mean, because, I mean, what I seen.
What would be the benefit of changing?
Well, the benefit is like, you know, you know, people need time off if Tuesday starts on weekends and stuff, you know, or, or, you know, a Monday. I, I mean, a Friday. I mean, we don't get anybody here on Fridays anyways, so why can't we go to a Tuesday or Monday? And, um, uh. I mean, what's the difference? What's the difference?
Doesn't matter. There's, there's no, I don't, I'm not aware of any legal requirements that we have it on, on a Friday. But we have, we do have a published and approved schedule currently.
Right.
So anything we want to change, we'd have to go through that, you know, that process and we'd have to notify people. But there's no requirement that we have to have it on a Friday.
I mean, I just think, I think it's, you know, I really, I mean, you know, every other Friday, I, I just think it, I mean, even for the employees and, and, and I mean, you know, it's tougher on them too. I mean, if they want to take off for a long weekend, they can't.
I think, I think the board would be happy to entertain that.
Well, I would like to entertain.
We're not entertaining it right now because we're set for the year. And I'm not going to change it.
David?
I mean, yeah, if we want to come up with a proposal, if someone's going to come up with a proposal, we'd have to, we'd have to, the proposed change.
People have already made their schedules based on the calendar that we have in place.
I'll be shocked. I hate to tell you.
I have.
Well, you two don't go anywhere anyways. You know, I mean, I would just like to entertain.
Michael, I am not interested in changing this year's schedule. I'd be more than happy to look, and I'm sure the board would be happy, to look when we go to address next year's schedule.
Thank you. That's what I want to do.
And, and have the conversation at that point in time.
All right.
Right now is not.
Yeah, okay. No, that, that's good. I'm good with that. I'm going to entertain it.
Anything else? Michael, got anything else?
No.
Any other discussions to and from board? I just, Michael, just give me an update quickly on this, this, uh, situation with the equipment.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay. All right. I met with Joey, Bob, Bob, um, Chris, uh, and the golf people. Um, we are coming, we are coming up with a way to save money on the equipment. Um, I've made a lot, a lot of phone calls of the best ways to do it. Um, I've asked Jimmy to get back with me with figures. Um, I, I, and, uh, um, I think I get Jimmy on board with me. I've talked to Bob Brumfield and Joey about, uh, using each other's equipment, which basically we do a lot of that now already. But, um, to go out and lease for another four years, from what I understand from the three places I called, uh, all three things that cost us more money to do it that way. Um, so I, I think if we lease maybe half the equipment and buy the other half, I don't know what the buy, the buyout's going to be. I thought it was going to be a dollar, uh, at the end of the contract, and I always heard that, but then I was told it wasn't. Um, so I asked what, what would the cost, for instance, for, for a gator? What percentage would the company charge us to buy that gator? Uh, and I was told 20% is usually the going cost of, of the value of it. So, or, or, or the value right now would be 20%. So for instance, uh, uh, we pay, uh, $7,000 for, for, uh, the gators that Jimmy has. Uh, we would probably end up paying somewhere around two grand, 2,500. Um, then we would take it. We would take the maintenance over. We do have two mechanics on duty anyways. Um, and, um, most equipment's in pretty good shape. The equipment that's not in good shape, that's probably would be the stuff that we would send back and, uh, uh, leased, leased for four years. But that's where I am right now. So, I mean, the people I work with are pretty good. Any questions?
Yeah, how, how many, I don't know if I have it here, but how many, uh, gators do we have?
23.
And how many on the golf course?
12.
Okay. So there's 11 on the, in the district and 12?
There's 11 on the district, but that, that, that includes water and sewer and roads. But you have to also remember, that's the main transportation to get people to work.
Yeah, and is, is this, um, have you guys decided on how much this is going to be cut? Or are you telling us they're going to keep the same or?
No, 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 no. We are definitely going to cut. Um, but right now, we, the district owns all the, uh, uh, the gators that they have. So my suggestion would be, uh, Joey or, or Bob, can you correct me? But I think we have a couple that, what are they, I mean.
Around 2,007, 2,008.
Right, so, so every couple of years, we would, we would trade those in and, and get new ones. Uh, but that's only for the district, maybe one or two. I know Joey uses his right now for water meters and stuff. And, um, and I also have some ideas, which I haven't told Joey this, that we have some trucks uh, that kind of sit a long time during the day and stuff, and they're older. And I think that we should look into trading them in to save some money too, and maybe buy a, you know, a couple utility trucks or a utility truck and a gator. I don't know. But I mean, right now, um, I started working at Monday and, uh, um, that's where I am with it. But, but I definitely think that we can save money. Absolutely.
Okay. Keep working on it.
Thank you.
Well, you got something to give us?
Okay.
Do you have something else, Mike?
I, I just, I just wanted to say that I, I called, uh, my friends at Brown again. They have 36 holes like we do. Uh, they don't have a district, so I, I don't know about that. But their golf course has eight gators, but they're not gators. They're easy go, whatever it is. But, and two of them are real old that the superintendent and his assistant drive. So they have six good gators for 36 holes. Uh, I don't have any recommendation. I'm just telling you what. A place that's for profit, they have six that they use for their employee. And you just told me we have 12, so.
Well, we have 12, but also use, um.
I, I'm not saying, Mike, I don't, I don't need explanation, I guess.
I didn't say this, but, um, uh, the golf course, they use also for, um, uh, um, what's her name there? Uses it, um, you know, for the beer carts. They use one or two there.
Well, it's.
And, and see, the problem is we bought some a couple of years ago, these utility, um, you know, for, uh, for that. And, and it seems they keep breaking down. And my question was, why do they keep breaking down? Are we maintaining them? And what I'm told is they over, you know, um, they over, um, they overload them. It's long distance and stuff. So you know what? If that's the case, we know that. Why do we, why did we ever buy them? You know, who suggested the?
Mike, that's, that's, I just wanted, I can't call you up and you and the rest of the board and tell you, but Brown has six workable gators. And, and that's all I, that's, I just wanted to pass that on.
Well, I, I mean, I don't know how big it is. I mean, when I talked to Jimmy, my initial meeting with him is we needed them. And I said, no, we don't. And I said, we have to make cuts. So, and he's working with me on that now.
Okay, keep working on it. I, I could tell you on the surface, it seems to me like there is a reluctance for anybody to give up anything.
Right.
Which is really unfortunate because it's just really unfortunate.
Yeah. Well, you just, Ray, it is going to be, but I can tell you, you, and I don't, I don't mean this critical at all, but we have Billy Casper Goff or Trune on the committee that they've been here all these years. We have Mike, who's on the committee and has been here and was all part of that. So, I mean, we gotta, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna see some of that. But I guess it's a job for us five to decide, and that's why I wanted to just mention.
Well, if you, the Brown organization that had 36 holes, I would like to see their whole utility, because a gator is a gator, but maybe they have other equipment they, they use like a gator.
I act, I asked that and, and that's what I was told. Cause I thought there would be extra things, but I can, I can call him back and get that, Bev. But I did ask him any workable, what they have, and they have 36 holes, just like we do. And they have six workable gators for their employees and two for superintendent and, you know, or one for, it's, they're old ones.
How many employees?
I, I don't know, but they got 36 holes, you know, so it doesn't make any difference. I'm sure they have less than what we have. I, I know that.
Establish 36 holes is fine, but is it a public golf course? Is it a private golf course?
Public.
I'm just trying, well.
Public and private, just like ours.
Okay.
Let's, let's see what they come back with.
I promise you, I'll bring back cuts, one way or another. It'll be less than where we are.
The most important thing, Michael, is to bring it back in a form that we all mere mortals can read and understand with the equipment, like all these, you know, lawn mowers.
Yeah, well, I have some here, but.
I mean, give it to us so we can understand it. And then I think, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens. I just don't think that anybody wants to give up anything. They're all being selfish. My, just an observation.
You're right. And, and I actually said that to him. I said, you know, everybody, every golf superintendent wants new stuff. Everybody. It's like you. You want a new car? You don't buy used. Any of us.
Okay, let's go on.
Right.
Are there any other questions or issues or public comments? There's no public left. Anything else? Okay, I think we'll, uh.
Yes, we need.
Two minute break, then we do the budgets.
Two. I need to make phone calls.
This conference will now be recorded.
This one? Yeah. That was me, that was when I, when I went through what Chris had prepared.
Yeah.
His, his cover sheet includes transfers and all that kind of stuff, which we really don't look at. So I gave him last year's summary sheet that Omar used to do for us. And then I changed it a little bit to make it work. So what you see here now is obviously, the first column is 22, 23 estimated totals. That's just off of these reports. The general fund numbers is what Chris is going to present today. Uh, you have operating revenues, expenses, and then excess for capital. The number below that, in this case, the 713,000, that's the number that, uh, I came up with based on our first capital meeting. So that's after the first pass. Doesn't mean it's in. That's just after the first pass. So if you're reading the general fund, it's got a shortage, including capital of $278,000 for the year. The golf fund, I just took their numbers that they gave us, which we know were not correct, but just to give us an idea where we were and plug those numbers in. And those numbers gives us a negative 460,000. And I did the same thing with the utility fund. So what it does is it gives you an idea of what we want. Now, if you're looking at the budget, for example, the general fund, the challenge to Chris was 3904. In, uh, I'm sorry, the challenge to Chris, I'll get this right. It was 3921, which was a 7% increase. And the challenge on expenses was 3608, which was a 7% increase. So you can see, you can take those numbers and compare it. You know, this is on the sheet that you didn't get.
Yes.
So you have to take my word for this one. But he's relatively close to what we wanted, to what we had asked or challenged him to come up with.
Okay, with the 3921 is, is 3904? You, you're saying?
Yeah, this white sheet says 3921. He actually came up with 3904. And the 30, the, the expenses was 3608. And the thirty, the, the expenses was thirty-six oh eight, he actually came up with thirty-four sixty.
Oh, okay, I thought he might do.
So theoretically, I, I said, the capital money is based on how I did it on this white sheet. Originally was three hundred and twelve thousand, now it's four hundred and thirty-five thousand. That's prior to capital being accounted for. So he's, well, I think in the general fund, he's pretty close.
Yes.
The utility fund, which is the other one, we had challenged him to be at three two one three, which was a ten percent increase, and he's at uh, three oh three seven. So he's off a couple hundred thousand on that. Okay? On the expenses, we said.
Hold on one second.
Yeah.
So I heard, this estimated actual, that's tw- twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two, isn't it?
Three oh three seven. Oh, no, 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 where are you? I'm over here on the utility.
The blue.
The blue is what you'll see on these sheets, this is what they gave, that's, that's on these sheets, yeah.
Estimate.
His estimated revenue on the blue sheet is uh, it's, it's three four three oh for the assessments. You have to go to page.
Oh, yeah, okay.
For the assessments, it's three four three oh.
Got it. No, I don't either. Assessments and maintenance fee for twenty-two, twenty-three is thirty-six oh one five. Got, got it, yep, 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 yep.
That's the total.
Yes.
But the, the actual assessments, which is that first line, is thirty-four thirty.
Okay, but that's twenty-one, twenty-two, not twenty-two, twenty-three, that's what got me messed up.
Oh. That would be correct. That would be an error on my part.
No problem.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, yes.
I thought that's what it meant, that I just wanted to make sure that I was reading this right.
So, and the utility fund, the, the challenge to him was, on revenues, three two one three, he's given us three oh three seven. The expenses were to hold them at two oh nine seven, and he's given us nineteen sixty-three, so he's lower on expenses. So in general, I think he's pretty well, he's close to what we were talking about. That's in gen, that's total I'm talking about. Now, we have to look at the individual pages to see how you guys feel about it. But I think he's pretty close to what we asked for.
I would agree, I, I, I guess on the utility fund, did we put in uh, price increase for water?
No, we ha, we haven't put that in in the revenue yet, and we'll have that rate, rate case final um, ready to present to the board June twentieth, which will really drive that final utility budget.
Okay, so this doesn't even include any rate increases?
Correct.
It includes the impact fees.
Correct.
Or whatever.
Yeah, the connection fees for the new housing, right.
But it does not include any adjustment to water rates.
Correct.
So you're still, yeah, so.
The increase that we'll see from the water rates, we're gonna have to create account, an account to hold that money aside.
For me?
So whatever that number comes up to, let's say two hundred thousand, he's gonna have to create an account
Yes.
that freezes that two hundred thousand for capital expenditures.
Restricted account, like Florida Avenue.
Okay. So if there's no, any other questions on this one?
No. Good, there's seven thirteen four, that's what capital we say we're gonna need for twenty?
That is, that is me going through the first capital request and my notes that I took during that, and the changes
Okay.
that we've recommended.
Right.
So it's not set, and again, when we, when we do capital next meeting, that'll all be spelled out. So that's just a guideline at this point.
Got it, got it.
It's not set. Any other questions on this?
I will say too, on the utility side with that rate case, you know, we, we've plugged in like the additional positions that we funded five months ago, four months ago, um, where we've only filled one of them, but the operators, that's going all into that rate case, you know, to cover the utility expenses. Uh, the principal and interest payments for an SRF loan are going into that rate case. I also put in a two-point-five percent franchise fee, we'll call it, which kind of formalizes a transfer of utility dollars back to the general fund. So that'll be shown in that rate case as a business expense to the utility. And really what that does is formalizes through the budget, a transfer um, of those monies back to the board. And, and those revenues have, haven't been shown, you know, on your side. In, in that category, you know, previously, it's just been, let's pull it from the reserve fund, but this'll be like a new fund or a source saying, okay, yearly.
More like a, a legal transfer to, or a planned transfer.
Yeah, when you do it, when you're adopting the budget, you're adopting that transfer. So I'm really not, not concerned about the utility being able to operate within their means in a lot of this, this big backlog of projects. The general fund is really rubber's gonna hit the road, and when people even talk about the dog park, you know, we didn't put any capital in for dog park improvements. Yeah, that seems to be a hot potato topic with residents and some board members, you know.
The cap, the capital, that's
Right.
We're gonna talk about capital next, next meeting.
Right.
This meeting, we should just go through your pages here.
Right.
And see if there's any challenges or questions that you guys have on his individual accounts.
And, and anything you bring up today, I will take that information, I will port it over to Infomart. They'll make those changes and give us a version two of the budget to work from for the next meeting.
In this little uh, fund that you said we'd have excess of, and we're gonna save it, right, two hundred and some thousand? It, would that, that will be in, in a fund where it's just for utilities? Or would that be stuff that's available for us to spend anywhere?
Typically, when you're collecting it for connection fees, it goes into a restricted account.
Okay, so it will be just, only could be used for certain things in the utility and so on and so forth?
We're gonna create one in both accounts.
Okay, well, we had one, and two, I'm just worried about, we had that one and Omar and Tanja did away with it, uh, can this, can you do this with us not knowing again?
No, they, they didn't do away with it, they just did in the last two budget years, like that contribution, so.
Yeah, well, it's the same thing, is doing away with it or stop doing it. I mean, again, we're being politically correct, but they ended it.
Well, and you have twenty-six, twenty-six local governments in the state of Florida that make transfers from their franchise, whether it's solid waste, electric, or water and sewer into the general fund through that.
But that was a board direction, and that's, that's all I'm talking about, I mean, so.
All right.
That could be done.
So, Chris, if we don't use that two hundred thousand dollars, can we roll it over, over to next year?
No, it has to, wait a minute, wait.
Capital.
Let me explain, so you guys understand, all the money, when we, when we raise up the rates on the water and sewer.
Yeah.
That's gonna be held until we need it for the capital.
Yeah, okay, that's what I meant.
For the loans that we're gonna take out.
Okay.
We need to come up with somewhere in the area of an additional eight hundred thousand dollars a year.
That's kind of what, okay, that's, that was my.
Between the general fund and the utility fund to offset if we were to borrow the fifteen million dollars outright. And again, this is all.
Yeah, that's just conjecture.
Yeah, we don't know yet for sure. I, I can tell you, we got one report back that, that's gonna be six million dollars if we go for it. We haven't gotten the big one back yet. So we have to, we're just trying to figure out how we're gonna get there. So that's why he did not put the, the water, the rate increase in, because whatever that is, is gonna be money that we can't touch anywhere.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, my question was.
So, let's go through each of the pages, I guess, I guess we'll start with Chris, start page number eighty-eight. I guess ask if there's any problems with it, we'll go from there. That would be the general fund, revenue, revenues and other sources. Because I have a problem on the first page, of course. Everybody on the right page?
I am on the right page.
Eighty-eight?
I don't have a page under mine.
Our actuals and our estimated. Membership dues has gone from sixty.
We're not going down, the estimate.
This is not easy to find, I tell you.
It was uh, which one you flipped? Well, Chris should tell you.
For special events, we show zero.
Is this utility fund you got?
And typically, those special events, they tip, in the past, they had charges for some of those events. You know, where they, admission fee or five dollars and everything we've been doing since. We really haven't charged money for it, and there's a few events in there, you know, like the fireworks, the Fourth of July, uh, Christmas that, that we just fund.
Let's, let's start with the very first line, because the very first line, I, I have already told Chris that I have a problem with.
Five percent?
The assessments. The five percent, I have a problem with because, what, number one, we haven't decided on five percent yet.
No.
And number two, that money, if we were to decide on it, has not been taken and, and put on freeze or whatever you might call it. So we, we can't commit to that five percent yet. My, my recommendation to Chris was, and in conversations we had with Amanda, Amanda thinks on our own that the assessments would probably, we could probably raise them fifty thousand dollars and be able to achieve that. So if you, that would make that three four three oh somewhere around three four eight oh or something like that. I think we should change the three six oh one to that number, and then hold off on the rest until we know how much money we gotta borrow and how much money we wanna raise in assessments. And then that, that money. He put, he, he took the assessments up five percent.
Correct.
Yeah, and I.
He did not account for that money.
I think five percent is probably a, a good, a good thing, whether we need it or not, but uh, we go, we raised the golf rate five percent, we might as well, if we, assessments five percent too, I guess, but.
The five percent is a good number, but we have to hold that money aside to pay off the money that we're gonna borrow, which we don't know either of those numbers as, as hard numbers right now.
Right.
So I don't think we ought to do, plan on that five percent right now, because we don't know.
And it's not usable money anyway.
Huh?
It's not usable money anyway.
It's not usable money, that's correct, that's correct. Because he probably, I made a mistake, I don't know.
We, we were looking at warm-up because with inflation running eight percent, you think you'd at least.
That's where I'm going right now.
You at least have to go across the board and, and we're also.
When you're talking about assessments, we're thinking in our back of our mind, we're gonna raise it five percent to cover the monies that we're borrowing. If you put five percent more on top of that, then you're talking about taking them up ten percent this year. I don't think that's gonna fly very good. That's my.
Where'd you come up with that fifty thousand you were talking about?
We sat down with Amanda, and I said, Amanda, based on new building, based on homes being built on vacant lots, how much do you think we'll get on our own?
Uh, got, okay.
And she said, fifty thousand dollars is, is a good number to use as a guideline. So if you went to the three four three oh and you made it three four eight oh.
And then took the other.
And then take the rest out and hold it until we decide how much we wanna raise assessments. It's, it's, I think it's a better picture of what, what reality is.
And, and we'll also have, have on the twentieth, when we bring those facility plans forward, we'll have that amount of borrowing and amortization schedule on those yearly P and I payments, so we can plug that right in and show you what it would cost if we borrowed that money for storm line.
The number that I gave you at the last meeting about borrowing, I planned a three-point-five percent interest rate.
Oh.
He's telling, now Chris said before, it's point two or whatever.
One nine.
I mean, I'm gonna probably be high in the number that I thought we had to collect.
Right.
So until we get good numbers, I don't think we can guess. So my challenge then would be to take that three six oh one five down to three four eight oh. Anybody? Everybody okay with that?
Can we get to where you wanna be?
I'm sorry?
Can we get to where, I mean, your challenge, I mean, can we get there, Chris?
Amanda said we can get there, I just said that.
Yeah, I, I think we can get there, but.
That number on my own.
Oh, okay. So instead of losing, we would be under another hundred and twenty-eight, hundred and twenty thousand, so we'd be four hundred thousand in the red.
Yeah, I didn't figure it out, but yeah. It would be worse, it's gonna be worse by
Hundred and twenty thousand.
About hundred and thirty thousand, yeah.
And this is based on uh, what we think we're gonna spend next year on capital and everything else?
Correct.
Okay, which, we'll probably take a knife to that, but we are sure to.
Well, on the, on the utility side, we're gonna.
This has got nothing to do with capital.
No, I know, I know, I know, but it's still saving money for one place all over.
If, if you, if you wanna know what these gentlemen are here for, they're part of the insurance adjustment team that's going around all the buildings and.
I guess my.
So yeah, when he re-words the numbers, there'll be about a hundred and thirty thousand worth, is that what you're asking?
Right, which, which tells us that we're gonna be under four hundred thousand dollars. And I don't like that as a plan.
What, this is.
It's the beginning, I, I understand all that, but I.
He's gonna be, it'll be like three hundred thousand excess for capital in the general fund. He's only taking it down.
Okay, but I'm going all the way down to revenue over, under expenditures.
Yeah, but that is, that's including the capital, and that's just the first pass.
I understand that. I just don't like plan that we're, that says that we're gonna be four hundred thousand short for our plan for the year.
At, at this time, that's what it will say. Until we do the capital and the second pass on the budget. Remember, the capital, we can still cut the, whatever we need to do is what we need to do. Now, there is one thing you guys don't know, which I guess I could pass on, is that we're gonna end the year at seven-point-seven million dollars between all the accounts. And if we go under the old premise of six million dollars was our cutoff, we theoretically will have one-point-seven million to play with.
We'll have how much?
That's too close, though, I mean, that's.
What?
We, we just talk about it later, I guess, it's just, there's never been something, hell, when I got on the board, we had fourteen million, you know, and we never worried about, we worried about that, I mean, or wasn't worrying about it, so.
I think you have to worry about it now, because we're talking about borrowing fifteen million dollars.
I know, now it's a priority.
No, now it's something, now we can't kick it down the road anymore.
Yeah. Well, when we, never mind, this is for another discussion, but. Yeah, we, we should have thought about that before we spent two-point-two million this year. I mean, theoretically, so I just, I'll just say it and get it over with.
Michael, you've. You gotta spend the two million because of Swift.
So now we're gonna worry about what we're spending.
We got six hundred thousand back.
Michael.
No, I'm serious.
Yeah, this is where we're starting, and this is a good place to start, and like I said.
And I agree, I, I agree.
We spent two million dollars on the, a million floor on the restaurant.
Yeah.
We wanted that.
Yeah.
And that's in the past.
It didn't work out, did it?
And you, that was your baby.
Yeah, well, and it didn't work out.
Why are we gonna sit here and argue about what we did in the past, why don't we just move on?
Yep.
And we'll also look, as Mike said, he's trying to find ways to save money in the equipment, and we're looking across the organization, because we can't just go to the residents and keep saying we need more money, inflation, we need to show them where we've saved.
Michael's right, let's stay with the sheets. On page eighty-eight, are there any more challenges?
I don't have a page eighty-eight, I don't have pages on my thing.
Yeah.
It's up in the right-hand corner.
Yeah, it's just small, it's like an A font.
Up here, see, up here.
Let us know when you catch up.
I got it.
Any more, are there any more questions on that page?
Yeah, seventy thousand for reimbursement services, legal services. That's where we think we're gonna get that from.
Page five. Page five.
Page five, the box.
I believe that's it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's accurate projection.
Okay.
Any other questions on that page? Next page. Now, keep in mind also, the salaries and the payroll are all reflective of his new.
Organ chart.
Huh?
His new organization.
New organization, which you have. Any questions on that page?
I will mention that.
Five thousand, is that because of that, uh, forepost from the captain, nevermind.
And the challenges are across the board, in my discussions when I was over at the county Tuesday at their meeting, they actually, with heavy equipment for their landfill and the people that mow the right-of-ways and that, they were having such a hard problem with staff. they actually with heavy equipment for their landfill and the people that mow the right of ways and that, they were having such a hard problem with staff. They did a 10% across the board salary increase, just kind of unheard of for county government.
10%?
10%. No, they weren't making that. Yes.
Okay, page 90. Any challenges?
No, I think it's a challenge. We got to do that some other time. Somehow we got to get a control of our benefits package.
Yeah.
What? I didn't hear.
Somehow eventually, not right now, but we somehow we're going to have to get a hold of our control of our benefits package.
And we're looking into that area and are having discussions, one about bidding our health insurance and that out separately from the county because typically they've piggybacked it, but I've seen smaller groups that have gone in for the health insurance and saved money. And I know from the experience we had at Gateway from piggybacking that is we went in on our own and saved 11% of what we were doing on the county side. So we are going to shop that side and there are some specific things we need to look at. You know, you just give a set amount of money and say, well, here's a smorgasbord. You can choose these benefits. And in some cases too, you have people that get the family plan. The guy doesn't have any kids, but you're paying 85% of it and he's getting a thousand dollars more a month in health benefit, but he's doing the same job as the guy next to him. You know, I think and it helps keep the people and is a benefit to the family, but that's one of the things you have to look at.
So are you shopping it now, Chris?
We are. We're putting it out to bid, not right now, but we will be.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a that's a touchy thing, and I talked about it right before I became president and and talked about it and the cost per week for some of our employees just to insure them. And I don't want to get into arguing about this and that, but they made they made a heck of a lot of money just in insurance benefits. And I I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, but it's it's county government is what it is. We're county government or federal government or state, state. It's there's no getting around it. There's just a lot of money. I mean, I, we were actually paying a few of them more money a week for health insurance than what we were paying them in salary. I mean, and I don't have the answer and I don't want to get in it, but it's just, I don't know. I don't know how we can keep afford and stuff like that. I agree with Craig, so.
You can even look at it because if somebody's at an executive level is getting the same benefit package percentage wise as somebody down here, there's no upward mobility. The higher you go or the lower, it's all all the same. But I think we need to look at all of it and come back and look for cost savings is what we're going to be looking for in equity.
Well, that's what you're doing. That's why you're shopping. All right. But we also want to make sure, and I know you go, what you guys are going to probably say, but I want to make sure that the employees have a good, good insurance plan. That's all I can.
Well, they have one. They got a good one.
And you look at it in another way, you're paying.
I never used it, so.
Well, you're paying somebody, say, our our premium is $850 a month for a health employee. Oh, if you opt out, we'll give you $200 a month. So where's this other 650 that all the other people are getting in?
Well, I mean.
Okay, page 90. Any other comments? You probably should explain the advertising line, even though there's no comments.
Yeah, I saw it.
I saw it too.
Huh? I mean, I think I know what it is, but.
The you're you're referring to the $55,000 in advertising?
I'm sorry?
You're referring to the $55,000 in advertising?
Why is it so much dramatically higher than this year?
That's, Chris, if I'm not mistaken, I think that that was what was bumped in there in the instance that the board decided to move forward with the Advent Health contribution. Is that correct?
Yep.
So that was that was the estimated number that we had kind of thrown around. Obviously, we have not set a number. We have made no pledges, no contributions, but for the sake of working through budget to kind of show what that might look like. I believe that's what was plugged there, and that's why that number reflects what it does.
Now, on the advertising, does does the golf also, I mean, use part of that?
No, no, they have their own.
But they used to. Didn't they used to or no?
No, no, my, we would. On occasion, we would run different things and help them with different pieces, but no, they, our budget here does not cover marketing and advertisement, advertisement at the golf course.
On the, if it's for the hospital, that money's got to come out of there, and I would put it into capital.
We'll make that move.
And I don't, we've never decided on that number. You were supposed to get back to us with some information.
Chris has been talking with Kristen.
What it costs us to run the exercise room, if I'm not mistaken, and that was going to be the basis for our contribution. So you can estimate it in the capital, but until you come back with that information, I don't think we can finalize it.
Yeah, we'll bring it back and the and the hospital is still working on trying to find a space to move our equipment for that bridge program because we told them that's.
How close is the hospital to even doing this?
Oh, they're three years. They're three years out till it's open.
So it's not even an issue right now. So for sure, it shouldn't, it should go into capital and start it three years out. Unless we have to give it to them upfront.
We we would probably have to start a pledge earlier. I would imagine for them to start making those moves.
It'd be a yearly for 10 years, and that's why the 50,000.
I don't want to give it to them until they break ground. Just to be on the safe side.
You were you were going to find out where they were on their contribution to what percentage?
Yes, and I have not done that yet, but I will reach out to Kristen.
But so what are we supposed to be giving them?
We don't know yet.
We have no idea. We haven't. There's been no pledge amount that's been.
That's what I thought.
That's what we're working on. We were going to see where they are as far as their.
That's going to come out. What I'd like for you to consider, though, is if this newsletter goes off the ground and you're going to mail it, you have, you're going to have to increase your cost of mailing it, and that should go in there.
Yes, potentially we would have to. We're, so I told you, we've got that meeting set on Monday so that we can start discussing costs and what that, once we know what it looks like, the printer can give us an estimate and then we can compare it to that because at the same time, the the costs that we're spending every single month on a newsletter is now cut out because it's only happening every quarter. So I I don't know if that's going to keep us relatively neutral too.
And there's there's no postage set up for that newsletter on the distribution right now because it goes out with the utility bill and the utility department eats it. You know, it just goes out with a bill and then we have something to hand out.
Put the cost of the newsletter in the budget.
We, yes, once we do.
Cost of the money we're giving to the hospital out of the budget and put it into capital. Okay? Are we good?
I guess.
On that page? Okay, what?
I I just, we're we're, are we giving the wrong direction again or what? Okay.
What direction do you want to give them?
I I don't. I don't want to give them direction.
Yeah, and that should be in capital.
Okay. Got you.
Why don't you want to give me? Okay. Page 91. Any questions on that page? What is R and M site facilities?
Repair and maintenance.
I'm sorry?
Repair and maintenance. R and M, repair and maintenance.
Repair and maintenance to to what? We're going from 18,000 to 45,000.
Swimming pool, this building.
I know, but if it's correct, we only spent 18,000 this year. Why would we go to 45,000?
I let me, I'll have to look at that. I don't know why that number jumped up so much. I don't remember necessarily making that recommendation, so let me follow up on that.
But it's not just this building, Chris. It's.
Tennis courts, anything public, anything recreative.
So the maintenance building, your building.
It it's possible. Let me go back and look at the notes. It's possible be. Kelly is under the impression that we may be looking at new heaters, that our heaters may fail on the pool, that it seems like their life is.
Heaters on the pool would be a capital, right?
How much are they?
It's our, well, it's repair and maintenance because you're replacing it. Capital's new, but the heaters, 10,000, 12,000 dollars.
Roughly, yes.
And how many are there?
Three.
Three.
So I thought, okay.
So.
Okay.
Let her answer the question.
Let let's address that line because I think I know what the answer is. You got a bad number in your estimate for this year. Yeah. If you look at your history, the number that you put in for this year makes no sense whatsoever.
The 45,000?
No, the 17,853.
No, that's what you spent this year, Ariel?
I know. This is 2021, 2022 estimated actual, so I'm assuming that they took what we've been spending and then tried to make it seem like that was going to be the actual number at the end. Again, I you'll have to let me look at that.
Because we just got done receiving. That was last year.
That was last year.
Okay, you're going to check that out for us?
I think we paid for it.
Can I just bring something real quick? Have we ever thought of of going with solar for the pool?
Have we what?
Going with solar for the pool.
Not interested. I don't think I would say no.
Why aren't you interested?
Because of hail damage.
Oh. How 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 many times you have hail hail in 10 years?
Only takes.
Once, yeah, and you have insurance.
Those heaters go down.
Michael, bring it up.
I would like to look into, see if we could put solar on the pool. Okay, less maintenance, no cost once we pay for it. I'd just like to look into it. Okay?
Is it?
You don't want to do it? Don't do it, but I'm just saying I like to look into it, Chris.
I know. Those heaters gas.
I mean, this is one guy, Mick. I mean, you guys okay with that?
That's fine. I don't care.
Yeah, we got a proposal to see.
Okay.
What it would be. I mean, what's.
Okay, check it out.
Yeah, we'll we'll look at it. The heaters, we have issues with the heaters a lot, so it may be an option.
And they're expensive to run, their maintenance and all that. If we can go with solar, maybe put it on this building here and.
Page 92. Any challenges on that? Page 93. Any challenges on that?
Financial recording. Is that InfraMark? No, that's, this is a this is finance. That's that would be InfraMark, wouldn't it? 55, 316?
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, you're going back?
I thought you were on 92.
I went to 93. Yeah, 92 is InfraMark. That big increase?
Yep.
And when when some of those, our budget, when you see some of that writing too, because we haven't done the transfer from salaries, like from Omar Sourin that that covers it, but.
I know, yeah.
We'll tie all that up.
So 92 is InfraMark. That's why it's.
Yep.
The page 93. Any challenges on that?
Uh, why don't we have anything for contract labor? Contract labor, there's nothing. I don't have anything on mine. And contract labor is would be what, Chris?
Are you looking at their code enforcement or?
No, I'm looking at.
What page are you on?
94.
93.
Oh.
Go back one.
Any questions on 93?
Quicker than you two are.
Any questions on 93? I know we got one on 94.
There you go.
All right, page 94. Go ahead, Michael.
Contract labor. You don't have anything there. I mean, I don't have anything on my side, Chris.
You've got contractual labor, 8300.
I mean, I don't know if that's temporary stuff that we use or I know that every year we always hire a couple of summer kids. Either, I don't know, I don't know if you hired them in the pool, but I I know that Joey and I.
Security.
What?
This is for security. Page 94.
Page 94 is security.
Yeah, and you don't have anything on that, but if you don't need it, you don't need it. Okay.
But even if we did hire a couple of kids for the summer, it wouldn't be under security.
No, no, it would be cut, but it'd be on the next page. No, no, Omar, I don't know. Where you, where do you use to bring people from?
All right, page 95. I think you see it. Contractual labor, you see it there, Mike. There's 35,000. Is that what you were referring to?
Yeah, I think that's what it was. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Any issues on 95? I got a challenge. I think landscape maintenance is too low. I think our grounds still look like hell. I don't think we give enough attention to our grounds.
Well, just so when Dan was here, we did hire a company, and I think we still have them here, Chris. Let's just name W2 or whatever it was there. We hired them.
Cut trees.
Right? And maybe we should up that budget if that's what you want, but how were you talking about landscaping? Here, you're talking about the boulevard?
Well, we.
Or you're talking about the district office?
I'll talk district office. I'm talking about here to a certain extent, Center Lake Boulevard.
Yeah, but.
County, I don't tell me the county's going to take care of it because they don't.
You're you're right, right? They don't. I mean, so 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 we've been doing that for years, taking care of it and getting nothing back. Now, they're supposed to be giving us money back, which they never have.
Who?
The county. Yeah, well, check your notes. You know, but the county is supposed to be helping us maintain the boulevard. As far as I've heard of.
I'll check. I'll check and see. You you could be right when they did that in original.
Yeah.
But they're going to main, they're going to maintain to their county minimums, so they would give us what they would wait before going, but I'll talk to Jonathan about that.
So at least you could take that money.
I mean, we can't take care of the grounds around the clubhouse. I mean, Michael, every year I have to hear from Mr. Gilpin about how they don't take care of the the high grasses by the.
I know, but the golf course takes, the golf course takes care of that. That's nothing to do with us.
Are you defending the golf? What are you doing?
I'm not defending them. I'm just telling you who's doing it. I mean, I don't care if Mickey Mouse is doing it. I'm just telling you who does it.
The life and life and health insurance. We have an estimated actual 22 of 43,000, but we're going to go down to 37.
Now, why do we go down?
How can you plan that?
Less people. Right?
It is less people, exactly, but but not in buildings and grounds in particular.
No, it'd be, yeah.
I'll have to I'll have to check that.
Check that one out. That's a good challenge. And I would check out the landscape maintenance. I don't care who's responsible for cutting this stuff, but I think we don't do a good job. We spend millions of dollars and we can't, we, the place doesn't look like it should. I don't think it's presentable.
Then then why don't we come up with a budget to fix, to upgrade the irrigation, to re-sod, you know, certain areas we want to do? I mean, we got to start somewhere, right? And I agree with you.
We bought you a piece of equipment. We bought the maintenance staff a piece of equipment to take care of that.
But we haven't got it yet, have we?
Those mowers.
Right?
Should be soon.
Yeah, there you go.
And that that was a six, seven month, and they're supposed to be in in the next two or three weeks.
Right, that's what they said.
Well, my question is, why has it gone from the actual 2021 of 30,000 down to 17,000?
Good question.
And that and that estimated actual too is, you know, they're breaking it out month by month, and so if we're going to make a big purchase or is a big expense coming up, that's why that's just taking the total, dividing it by 12 and say, here's the estimated actual. It's like utilities, they do all their big sampling, thousands of dollars in the summer, but month to month, it shows estimated actual based on one 12, not on the actual.
You think it's enough money? That's fine. I don't.
I'd like to see it up, but I mean, but we got to give them areas to get better. You know, do we want to get the boulevard better? Do we get money from the boulevard? I I mean, from the county? Do we want to make the district office better? Well, we got to upgrade you, you know, we got to upgrade things, the irrigation. We got to maybe re-sod, you know? So if you want to do it, then let's let's find two or three areas to do it and fix it each year to get it better. Like here, we did a lot of work out here.
That ain't our job.
Well, whose job is it?
It's our job.
Right, I know it's his job, but we got to give him the money. I mean, what are you going to do?
I'll just, you want to give him a blank check?
Do a better job with what we have.
There you go, Chris. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? On that page? Page 96. Any issues? Page 97. Page 98 is the capital, which we'll pass on until the next meeting. And that's the end of general. Utility fund. We'll start on page one, 101. Any challenges on 101? Page 102. Anybody? The payroll processing fee is Infomark. Page 103.
Life and health insurance, back on 90, on 102, need to look at that too, shows it's coming down.
Which one?
Well, it doesn't over the actual from previous years, but, uh, well, that 19834 must just not. It should be all right, never mind.
Page 103. What is vehicle maintenance?
Oil changes, tires.
I mean, I guess the only thing that, you know, it's a red flag, because we only spent 499 dollars this year, and now you want 11 grand?
Contractual labor also. Went from an estimated actual 41,022 to nothing, contractual labor.
No, there, I missed that, contractual labor, that's going down to zero.
Well, we aren't, we aren't using, uh, temporary workers, is what they were doing before, we had, we had two temps in utilities, and also wanted an admin spot.
We don't intend to have any of that.
Oh, this was the meter readers and stuff like that?
Okay.
What about the vehicle maintenance, is that just a bad number from this year?
I think it's, it could be, I'll look at it a little closer, a bad number, but there's some, some backlog on it too, and, and you noticed that in security, because they came up recently, and Bob goes, all the rotors are bad, the air conditioning's bad, this, I mean, the truck was falling apart before they put it in the shop, and all of a sudden he came in with this huge bill, and I was like, where were you guys, you know, as this stuff was all falling apart, and I guess it wasn't until the air conditioning failed that, let's look at it.
So, we are, we are, we are buying a new security vehicle this year, right?
What's that?
There is one in the budget.
Okay.
Page 104.
Do you feel comfortable with that sludge disposal? You went down.
Well, that's.
You got an actual 40,022, you're down to 30,000 in the budget.
Well, that's what happened, we had those parts malfunction, we had the $23,000, so we've got that fixed now, we hope we don't have that happen again, or we need to create that big bill to haul it away.
Okay, so you feel okay with it?
Joey?
Yeah, I think this year's gonna be a, a rocky year for that, personally, I think that we need to get more sludge out the door, so.
Then you better look at that number.
Yeah.
Change it. What should it be?
I'd like to see a haul a week go out.
I'm sorry?
I, I don't know the actual number right now, without pulling up the county's receipt and the, um, disposal fee, but I think we need to be closer to a haul a week.
So for the next go-around, put a better number in that you're comfortable with.
Manhole covers and rings.
Huh?
Are you on 105?
No, 105 is capital, so that's next meeting.
All right, oh, good.
I'd be at the end.
No, I just saw that 220,000.
What'd you say? Oh, 22,002? That's all the transfers, that. Okay, any questions, that's the first pass.
Right.
So what I need you to do is to make those few changes based on what we talked about, update this for the next meeting.
Summer sheet, right?
And then prepare a capital sheet for each fund, based on what we did at the last meeting, that we can review as well, so there'll be three capital sheets and this sheet updated. What else do we have to do, oh, and then we're gonna do the golf, golf, same time.
We're gonna do golf at the same time?
Yeah, they haven't really presented it yet. Yeah, I mean, this is just their numbers from the first time, I, he said they're close, but.
Well, I just, I just want them to ask for what they really think they need, and then let us.
This is supposed to tell. Supposed.
There's no growth in the membership, I don't.
Anybody have any questions on the first pass? Chris, I think for the most part.
It was a good job, I think.
For the most part, you did a good job in the first pass, it took a lot less than it usually does, so, anybody have anything else they wanna bring to the table?
Did we find out the address of the, where the modular is going to?
Sure.
Thank you, and what are the assessments for modular?
Well, it's an improved lot, that's how it has water and sewer, so it's the same as any other home.
It adds sewer to that lot and everything? Well, it's gotta be appeared at.
To my knowledge, to my knowledge, if you go down Orduna, and where Cortez crosses, where we're talking about putting the new road in.
That's not.
You keep driving, there's a water line and a sewer line that shoots back. Yeah, yes, but it catches the backside of Schumacher.
Right.
So it loops in there, so it is.
That's not the little guy here, is it?
No, they just will not have a road to their property, if you would have to literally drive off the end of Orduna where it dead ends, and keep going, I think it was six lots in, I was talking with Sunday about it.
Any other questions, any comments?
Nope.
We're done.
We'll continue to investigate, like I said, it went from here.